Good morning. Welcome to today's proceeding. Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, are there any conflicts of interest at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to the reading in a minute, Madam Auditor.
Sorry.
What were yours?
Got it. May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. The Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Ty Rossford, Chairman Presiding. Members present were Schultz, Dozark, Rossberg, Mulbauer, and Hyden. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the Board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all of the departments. The Board recognized the resignation of Elizabeth Morales, Motor Vehicle Supervisor, Treasurer's Department. The Board recognized the hiring of Garrett Groves Park, Seasonal Park Attendant at Nelson's Park Conservation Department. Motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Hyden, to approve budget amendment to Crawford County Iowa Zero Two Secondary Roads Budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the following resolution, twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three. Resolution transferring funds. Two hundred and ten thousand from General Basic into the Secondary Roads Fund, and one million three hundred and forty-five transferred from Rural Basic into the Secondary Roads Fund. Voting I, Schultz, Dozark, Rossberg, Mulbauer, and Hyden. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozark, to approve Mark's dust control as a dust control applicator in Crawford County. Motion passed unanimously. At ten AM is advertised, a motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Hyden, to open the public hearing regarding budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Motion passed unanimously. There were no written objections. At ten oh-three, a motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Hyden, to close the hearing. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the following resolution, twenty-three dash twenty-two. Appropriation by department. Appropriate, let's see. Voting I, Schultz, Dozark, Rossberg, Mulbauer, and Hyden. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Hyden, seconded by Dozark, to approve a county health certificate for parcel zero-one-three-six-three-five-two-zero-zero-four to the City of Ricketts. City of Ricketts is to pay three hundred and thirty-nine dollars plus assignment cost and abate the future taxes. Motion passed unanimously. Discussion was made by the Board about the handbook policy, two-point-one-two reimbursement expenses. No action was taken at this time. A discussion was made by the Board about the dead trees around the courthouse. No action was taken at this time. On motion, Julie, seconded the Board adjourned at eleven eighteen AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, four-thirty PM, proceeding the next meeting.
Are there any additions or corrections, attractions for the minutes? Hearing none? Hit the blue out. Hearing none, the minutes will stand as approved as read. Long one, that's a nice short one. Okay, Supervisors' reports. I'll start off quick this time. I had Central Iowa Juvenile Detention last week. One bit of good news to report, the new structure over there. The new facility that's kind of geared to old, more unruly juveniles and adult charge and try to keep them separated. And it's actually turned out pretty great, pretty much. It's, it's done, and I do believe either this week or next they'll start putting juveniles in there. So again, kind of a nice.
How many juveniles can they?
I think they can put, I think they got twenty beds in there. I mean, it's like everywhere else, though, you know, they've got so many bed slots allotted, so this actually leaves some extra room within the whole facility now. But this one here, they, they got individual beds that they can shut down, but they've got small, like there's three, like three or four of them are for three, three juveniles, and then a couple were for four juveniles in their. Yeah, it's, it's a hot setup, but it's in their daycare, their kind of day, dayroom area. There's a TV out there, but they also got TVs, not in the room, but there's a window. You always have to have eyes on them every so often, depending on what kind of a watch they might be on. There might be a suicide watch or an unruly watch, but they got new different types of beds that are supposed to be, although they claim they're destruct proof, but we'll see, you know, we'll find a way, right? But they got, they got a nice setup in them now. And and anyway, there's some of the kids, you know, he kind of was going over stuff that these kids will do, like if they're in the dayroom area, sometimes they just, "I'm not going to bed." Fine, the other kids go to bed and they lock them away, you know, and they get their room shut off. And that one, they just leave them out for now because they're in a separate from the rest of the facility. So they just leave them out there. And I think they don't block them away from the room because that's the only place there's a restroom. But what they'll do is if they, if they do that a couple of different nights, then they get to go to one of the rooms that are, where it's just, the dayroom is for a single person, and it's just that one person on one bed in there. So they'll use that kind of as a way, they don't get confined to a bedroom. They still got their dayroom, but they don't get to be around their buddies because, you know, and they'll use that if they're, you know, they're physically aggressive to other kids or the administrators or, you know, they just are unruly, because, you know, they're there for a reason, they're gifted at being unruly, right? But it's really a nice facility. I mean, they're all around the back of every room area is actually a hallway back there. We're great to get in all the pipes and they can't put like a towel down the, the commode to try to plug it and screw the whole thing up. There's, there's actually a thing in there that can get right to it, that plugs it up. Kids will try to flood their rooms, you know, just out of spite, they'll do crazy crap like that. So they got a really nice setup now, and I think it's being used in some prisons too. I mean, the way, the way you talk, you know, but it's for these, for the youngsters, it's probably a little nicer setup. But all the tables and everything are bolted down against facilities. I mean, they're, because they'll find ways to do all kinds of destructive things if they can. So I mean, but to help save money, Tony and his crew actually did all the bolted down and stuff. Just to bring in another crew to do all that was going to be an enormous job. So anyway, it's, actually, it looks really nice. I think it's going to be a nice setup. So it should be helpful. Obviously, as Kyle expressed last week, we're short rooms. So, you know, I did try to address that, and I didn't get a chance. It was, we had an extremely long meeting and it was, everybody was in. I, I asked him, I says, "How come we're more expensive for the adult charge?" Because they said that, that the YES Center took one on because you guys were too expensive. He said, "Well, I shouldn't be." I said, "Well, I don't think they're relying to me. What do you think?" And he said, "Well, we need to address that." I said, "Well, please do." And then we got busy on other things when the meeting started. Anyway, this is the, this is the initial report. You know, I'll just pass it around. I highlighted Crawford County. We've actually spent eleven thousand nine sixty over their year-to-date, and seventeen thousand is what was in the budget. And I suspect that was Nate's budget, and that's what he put down there. So anyway, if you go through this, you can see there's, there's the member counties, and there's affiliated counties that, they are, we're a member county.
Affiliated step below.
Yeah, step below, a step below member. And then there's the non-contract counties, which is like a Polk County, which it costs them a lot. And they, they fill just about everybody that's got some space, don't they?
Yeah.
But.
That's the difference between a member and affiliated.
Well, an affiliate isn't a member, so they don't get the member price, but they, they, they have an affiliate. It's just a different level of contract, you know, it's between the gold and the bronze.
Why are we a member?
Oh.
Went back to.
Do you remember?
That went back to when we were having budget amendments monthly for some kids up to the YES Center, so then.
Two bad years in a row of over budgeting on.
Yeah, it was costing us a lot.
Our juvenile detention. So we.
The majority of the Board at that time thought it'd be good to become a member with Central Iowa because they were dangling a cheaper rate carried out in front of us at the time. And I, so just, that's why we became a membership.
The kicker is Craig, I remember, right, as a member, we also have skin in the game as part of the association or their, their facility. If they go under, we would be, we'd be on the hook for being a member.
I think that's how it was at the time, but we just put it basically another tool in the toolbox for Nate to be able to manage his operation.
And Nate does do that. He watches to see what his costs would be to go to the YES Center versus I, Central Iowa. He tries to go to the YES Center first because it's closer, obvious, for obvious reasons, that's advantageous. But when it's going to be expensive, because we've got to do the, an evaluation or something that's going to be over a month or something, then a lot of times it's cheaper to go over there. So that's, Nate's got it all penciled out, what it costs him to do here. So it, it's helped, I suppose, in that regard. But anyway.
Why you see, because there's no dues. I mean, they haven't changed anything where counties are paying dues, so I think that's why, you, otherwise, why wouldn't everyone be members? You know? So someone's saying, "Well, I'd rather be an affiliate or a non-member, I use them only when I have to," where members are, you know, tied to the group.
Which is similar to what we've talked about with mental health. If we just paid per person, would we be better off than having to be not all coming together?
And, and you know, and that's the thing is, you know, I mean, it sounds like you guys went through a little bit of a tussle when you were figuring out what, what to do to help get your cost on, on juvenile detention. And I think you'd probably go in spurts.
Wouldn't we have to figure out what we pay per year? How many kids we send up there, what that costs us, and what that per child cost as an affiliate, the cost as opposed to our membership plus our per child? And see what would come out in the average of the last couple of years if we were making a change.
I think a member's also got voting privileges versus an affiliate is. I mean, members, and that's a thirty-one, it's a thirty-one-person commission. And I will tell you that they're all pretty, especially with the budget stuff. I mean, we did the, the budget for payroll and it got to be a line of our meetings. It was long. We ran a long meeting, and I still voted no at the end because I, I didn't approve of that.
Which is, and all coming later, that we will no longer have a vote of mental health. So keep all that in mind while we're talking.
But there, there was years ago, I remember, right, the member counties of the YES Center had a bad year where, I remember that tree, where the member counties kicked in like twenty, twenty thousand a piece just to keep them afloat because it was cheaper to do that and keep the YES Center going versus being a nonmember trying to go who knows where. So I mean, anyway, we're invested as Crawford County in the YES Center.
No, I think with, with the talk, if the, up there, the new county comes in, they have to buy in too.
Yeah.
No, that makes sense.
I understand exactly on how many, and I know it's all, you know, region, and I kind of guilty of only caring about Crawford County a lot, but how many of our kids are actually, do we have an actual number on how many kids go there a month, a quarter?
I got all this stuff right here.
I mean, all those though, but it's just a pay-as-you-go thing. It's not that we're paying a hundred dollars upfront.
No.
We just get billed with it when we got kids there.
And I, and I will say this.
What's our fee to a member?
We don't have none. There isn't one.
There's no annual fee at either place.
The, I think your responsibility is like Dave brought up a little bit higher.
Just trying to.
But with the, the good thing about, and I'm not saying it's over the YES Center. I, the good thing that I see here in Central Iowa is he's tied into so many things that actually increases their income. And you'll see, they got like forty million a year that goes through their hands because they're, they're fiscal agents, they're employee record. In fact, I told Jay Menlike about the employee record status because we've been wondering how we're going to, what would be a good way to handle getting benefits to the CDC people, but you can do it through that employee record. And I said, "I don't know what it costs." I said, "I didn't have time to talk to him about it," but I said, "It probably would," and I gave Jay his information. I said, "Probably worth the call." I mean, worst thing, you find out you don't want to do it, but might be something you want to do to offer a benefits package.
They raise corn, beans, peat hogs, two cattle.
No, not yet, but go give Tony the option, he might figure out how to do it.
They, they do it all, they're not a.
He sticks his fingers, he sticks his fingers into everything. Anyway, I'll let you look at it. This is the Central Iowa, this is their detention revenue report, okay? And most of that stuff, you know, you can see down here on the bottom where you got early childhood. This is where they're actually working as the, well, I think, I think they do fiscal agent for them, but they're also employee of record.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Could you use that for daycare centers then also?
Yeah, any, anybody can work, work out of twenty-eighty. There, I mean, they do it for early childhood, you know, is that one of your committees, Dave? It's Gene, are you early child?
We had talked about that year when I was on ECI, but I think it was BV at the time, their auditor was covering the responsibility and getting paid as a fiscal agent, and they were fine with that, so we didn't make the change. But there were some ECI dudes that had counties who didn't want to be a fiscal agent, so then they used them as a member.
And that's what our problem is with mental health right now, is there, the people that get to stay on the board as the forty-nine percent from the new file that the governor has to sign on June eighth, which she had to sign yet. Hope she doesn't, but sure she will. So if you're now a per, a county that has an employee of record, that's how they made the decision who got to stay on board. So we made the decision not to be that for when Casey came on, and so that's, we kind of shut ourselves in a foot a little bit on that.
Okay, well, anyway, this, this is a, you, you guys can look through this a little bit. I mean, it's got some interesting stuff in here. And then this is our expense report, and it's obvious. The detention part is this brownish-looking color. That tells you their totals for detention, and then the community totals, and then operational totals. Community totals is like what they're doing for hospital on urinalysis and types of things like that. But then operational is where they're doing, where they're the fiscal agents and stuff like that. And then there's the total expenses down here. In any event, then there's their net worth reporting, if you want to see what that outfit's worth. I mean, it's, that's that chart. And this is the aging one. Terry had a question for on that one. I didn't ask them there. He doesn't, he just puts out the report. He doesn't ever complain because, trust me, we're, we're usually shining. But we do have one that's ninety days outs for seven hundred and seventy-five bucks.
I don't pay those bills. I mean, we pay them, but Nate has it. You gotta talk to them.
And he's gone today. Okay, and that was, that was my question, is who do I address on something like that? Just, we're always cleaned up on that one, everybody. I mean, I don't know, here you got like ten thousand for Boone County, you know, they're ninety days out, you know, I mean.
Unless they presented some questions back to Central Iowa, and that'd be the, the only, that would be the only thing I could think of what's holding them up.
Yeah, YES Center, same way, they get questions about invoices, about transportation and something. So they're just, they're going to answer before they pay the bill.
Anyway, you can take a peek at that, if you guys want to start over there. And this here's their expenditure report, you know, I mean, you guys can look through this, be advised, but it's just all their different things that they're spending money on.
Ty, who does our transportation? Is it signing with Central Iowa?
No, we actually got their own.
They got their.
They've got a, they've got a big, you guys got a fleet now too, don't you?
Yeah.
And that's a part of their billing is included.
Well, it's not.
It's part of free charge, free transportation.
What?
When Tony was here, when they signed us up, it had been cost up on the transportation.
But now, yeah, exactly.
It's included.
Yeah, it was supposedly included, yeah. And I still haven't really understood the reason we don't do that now, but other than the fact that everything went enough. But I don't know. So anyway, and some things are supposed to still be free and others, he's pretty good, he shouldn't be politic. Anyway, this is their hiring report. Good news is that their, their resignations have went down. And then back here's executive director of ours. You know, if you want to look through that, you're sure welcome to. Here's the, this is always interesting to look through, just to see what kind of things are going on out in our state. This is their detention report, all right? And then Crawford County, year-to-date, we've had a hundred and seven bed days. But you know, you look through here, some of Marshall County's got a thousand and sixty, you know. Webster County is eighteen hundred and fifty-eight. What's your bigger counties? But, but, you know, I mean, it just shows you the different variants in counties. The green ones are our member county, yellow affiliates, and then the non-contract, which then that kind of gets us over here. Your year-to-date beds is for Polk County is fifty, five hundred and eighty-three, but probably made more money off that than they did Webster County because in that it costs them significantly more because they're not part of our, in our organization. Anyway, this shows you the list of what some of the kids are in for. It doesn't mention any names or anything, but it'll tell you their gender over here, the county they're from, and then whether they're an adult charged or, you know, and it's, where it says waived, that's adult waived. And, and then whether they're, and then this is their.
That means they were an adult, but that guy.
No, that means they're, they're juvenile, that they're waived to try it as an adult.
Try it the other way around.
Yeah, so, and then this over here is the, the degree of the felony, you know, and then this is the number of days that kid has actually been in the detention. I mean, they're, like this one young fellow from, he's the first-degree robbery, and he's from Marshall, and he's been there a hundred and ninety-nine days, so. Just look at the, at least we don't have, I'm trying, that's more days than we've got, you know?
That's a budget must-.
You ain't kidding. I mean, that's, just think about those kind of things.
The crazy thing is we have no say on paying that.
No.
And they, I mean, they have to be put somewhere in the way it's set up with the state.
Yeah.
That comes through us on property tax.
Yeah. It's another one of those things, you know, and there's some of these in here. You look at what they're in there for, and you go, "Why are they even in juvenile detention for that?" And that's the ones that like Kyle brings up, that we got, that we inherited from our state schools and stuff, you know?
I think they take some of the school funding. I mean, a school gets seventy-five hundred bucks a kid, and the kid's in Detention Center for six months. That takes six months of the funding from the school and stick it, or it's this detention.
You want to stick your finger in that thing?
It might not hurt.
Be worth the time, but somebody might snap off, but sticking through the hole.
Governor Sowie now, you can just take your money and go anywhere you are with it now, so you just will take it right.
Right to the juvenile detention. I won't argue. They do try, they do bring, they do bring instructors in every day.
They get teachers there.
You might be working on that.
It is a hell of an add-on.
Yeah. So anyway, and then it also shows that both March and April's months here, so if you guys want to take a peek at that.
There is more information on this, this person could go through and try to dissect.
Oh, it takes, I'm, I'm, I'm getting used to it, but there's a lot of info.
So help me understand, you know, Crawford County and Humboldt, knowing that Humboldt is a smaller county, okay? So when they say over here, year-to-date percentage of, what exactly does ninety-nine point nine percent mean versus Crawford County's at seventy? What, what are they using the, what?
I have their overall budget. They don't have what they're expecting.
They're you, they're you, okay, so.
Okay, year-to-date budget, yeah, that's, that's how much of our budget we do.
So Humboldt's use ninety-nine point nine percent of what they budgeted.
Yeah.
So they only have a month left, but still, we're at seventy.
Yeah, we're at seventy point four.
Just kind of just.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a lot to, it's a lot to inhale, I get it.
Ty, how do they know how much we budgeted for that?
I think that Nate probably turns in a budget.
Okay.
That's my guess.
See, that's one question just leads to another question.
And I would expect that, Craig, too. Nate says, "Here's my overall budget. I'm going to price, and if I look at my overall general trends year to year, I spend this many kids, yes, this many kids here."
Kind of just a roll of the dice.
And it is.
With most of ours, same as us. You know, we're getting some what we're going to have for expenses next year. And that's why we have amendments.
They're doing workforce development.
Anyway, this is the coordination and employer record stuff that they do. You know, and that's, or like I said, they have workforce development and, and early childhood are the big ones that they do. The employer record, the offer benefits packages and stuff like that through them. And they have a lot of employees, so they do have a beneficial insurance.
Do any counties do that with them, you know?
You know, no.
Okay.
Not at this point. I mean, we got IFRS and stuff like that, so. So it's a different, and I don't know if they can be in our, what we're doing for, since we're a self-insured. Anyway, this is their fiscal contracts, which is called coordination. At the state level, they call it coordination. So anyway, this is who they got on their record, so you're sure welcome to look at that. I mean, there's a, all the list of them. And then this is what some of these people do, it's just got some different things, you know, kind of like that.
Guys, the member group, member county start growing, or are you holding that?
Actually, they're still, they still have people contacting them. It's not like when they did the.
They're not shutting it off or anything, a certain amount, if you want to be a member.
Yeah, you can still be a member. Yeah, I mean, and they, they don't, they, they get someone, usually if somebody's having trouble, you know, or they're, they don't, you know, they, they can't find a bed or something, you know, that's, they, I think that it's getting expensive, you know, to have a center. And some of the small centers actually closed once upon a time. They blame Tony for it, but I don't know. That could be, but in any event, the, that's how they get some of them. They still have some, and then they've gotten, you know, where they, like where with us, they get split counties, you know, where we use both. Anyway, this is their revenue and the type of, this is a, this is how they, different thing. And you're sure welcome to look at it. You can see where all of his monies come from. And if you look, the workforce development, that's just the monies that run through them. Some of that's the budget that's coming to workforce development from the state through Central Iowa and then off to the different places of workforce development. So that looks real nice and fancy, but if you look at the normal ones that are, that have been there the whole time, you can see all that stuff just keeps growing. It's, he runs a pretty good shift business, or he's got some good people.
I think he puts these numbers into the C M S secretary that does all this.
He's got some people.
Okay, he's got.
He's got a pretty good.
I feel good about that, because I thought he has to, might it, might it drag it for that.
Yeah, no, he, he, he puts in a fair amount of hours himself, but he's also got, anyway, getting on, I don't want to keep, take too much time. I know Gene's got mental health too. But we've, oh, they, they also just switched their insurance company, you know, like up from like a Hoffman-type thing to a, to another one because this, the ones that we were using just kept giving us the same insurance company year after year. And they said, "There wasn't anybody out there that would." Well, they switched to a different guy. Lance suggested that we switch to a different guy, and all of a sudden, poof, we had all kinds of people popping in. We could, we get, and then so are actually, we're getting a better rate on our insurances. And obviously, as you know, insurances for juvenile detention centers are not cheap. So anyway, then there's also, they just got their, their, their auditor report, the state auditor report, and it was, it was a very good report. You're welcome to look at that. Then they also have sub-audits, and that's on, oh, I think if I remember right, how we explained that, it'd be the things that, the, the pass-through stuff, but that doesn't have a finding in the end. So the state doesn't do a finding, so it just kind of gives you the report here. You're sure welcome to look through that stuff. And well, this is where we got into the pay. And at first I was kind of thinking, well, this two and three and a four-point, their, their, their bottom-end earners were starting to catch up to the top-end earners to where nobody wanted to go into admin. And they said, "Well, I don't want to have all that responsibility when I can make," in fact, some of them, the top of their middle people, the CSC people, were actually making more than, than they, if they went into the administrative job, they took a pay cut. So they said, "No," you know, so anyway, they wanted to give a four-point-five versus a three and a, and a two to the different levels, which sounded pretty reasonable to me. And then I started exploring, and I said, "Well, what's this down here on the bottom where it says cola differ?" And I mean, is cola not figured into that? And they said, "No, cola's automatic every year." And then we wanted adjustment on top of it. So I said, "So this is six-point-one, and this is with five-point-one." And I said, "Wait a minute, no, I don't like that. How come that's split?" Well, then I thought, this was, this is the start of fiscal year twenty-four, and that's what the cola in it, that ain't just what their start was. So I mean, it's pumping everything up. And I said, "No, you put that all in one, and your pay raise comes in that. You figure the coal in there if you need more on top of it." I said, "This, this, that's, that's just deceptive as hell." I said, "I don't like that at all." Like, so when they went through it and they marked it down, I can't remember how the hell they, I was wrote my notes of the two first papers, but I can't find. They marked it down some on these, and then it ended up being, it was just a little bit off that, but the. It was just a little bit off that, but the uh. I still did, I voted no, because they wouldn't put them two together, that made me stand that, I couldn't stand it.
Nobody else saw a problem?
Oh, yeah, there were six of us that voted no, but six out of thirty-one, of course.
It's a big board.
It's a big board, but it's, it's, it's actually a very, they're always digging in you. Little detail, it seems like everybody's got their own little fetish that they dig at, so it's actually a good board. And it's really got some good supervisors, Kyle is actually our chair.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, uh. And then, you know, this is our evaluation to Tony, which I think he does a pretty good job. I'd like to see him work, you know, since he's one of the bigger detention centers, and since going usually just does everything to make sure it benefits them. I said, I'd like to see him do more to reach out.
How many are there in the state of Iowa with detention centers?
What is there, seven?
Seven, same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, I don't know, and you guys are sure welcome to take a look at all this, I'm trying to hurry up and get done here and can't remember everything without the. First two pages, no, I haven't, I left them sitting there, we were rushing out of there so I could go look at that damn new building, which is really cool. Anyway, you guys are welcome to look through them, I don't think there's any sensitive, it isn't like a.
Is the new building a standalone or is it an addition?
No, it's hooked on.
It's hooked on, okay.
It's hooked on and they got all their secure doorways between here and there and everything, I mean, it's, it. You you're really kind of, I was gonna video it, and I lost my damn phone out. But it's, it's pretty cool, it's really got the different pods that all go around where their central control center is. And then there's a hallway, there's this control center, and then there's the hallway. And then the pods are out around that, and then there's that other hallway that's out behind it with all the pipes, all the electric right there for people to get at, so, yes.
Question, looking at their revenue by type, all of a sudden, here in twenty-three. Their highest revenue on this page shows workforce development, which to me, reading between the lines, are they getting? Did the state contact them or they are, because all the workforce development areas, regions, it was all the twenty-eighty. Give back state, I'm wondering how that transpired of of them probably filling some of that gap.
I think that's what's happening, that's what it looks like to me. And just remember, that that's not necessarily money that they, now, they get their percentage of that for managing the money. But that's actually the entire budget for workforce development that's going, goes through them.
Now.
Yeah.
Because they, because we don't have any regions.
Because we don't have regions, exactly.
Curious how the hell, you know, how it's, it pops up that this happened and now it's flowing through them and.
And I don't, you know, I suspect that he's fiscally approved for the state to use, that's why they're doing it, that's my guess, I mean. I didn't talk to, you know, you try to keep that meeting moving, it's like trying to keep this one moving sometimes.
Well, it's because we keep asking a lot of questions.
No, and that's exactly what we do to him too, so.
So what are the ages of these children again, remind me?
Well, they'll all be less than eighteen, but like some of them that you're scared, that really have scary ones on there, there's some of them as young as twelve.
Okay.
I remember one of them that was up for murder charges, a twelve-year-old.
Yeah, but I don't see any Crawford on this.
No, thankfully you don't right now, if we had one on there, I think it was the last report.
All right, I should pass this on next week.
Anyway, that's uh, that's, that's probably all, I won't, I don't, other, I had a few small calls, but uh mo- mo- mostly about this down there. Or assuming it's down right, so that's about all I had for the week. Dave, want to go next?
Sure, sure, um, I heard a short thing first, I know we talked about going with Paul, setting up another trip. Go see Martin, visit Martin Marietta, take a tour down in, and just kind of. Visit with him. It's great, a great thing to do, I think it's great to even just meet with the managers of Martin Marietta to. Show, express our, our goals and what we're trying to accomplish with our secondary roads. However, uh, so sitting with Scott Johnson and the staff houseman from Carroll and Mark Campbell from Webster, and they had mentioned, hey, if you do that. We'd sure love to be able to maybe all go together.
Yeah.
And I I I talked to Paul and Bob about it, I don't know how many people can go at once or take a tour at once. But either way, it'd be a couple counties going together to meet with.
Good network.
The managers and saying, hey, here is our, well, not just one county expressing its needs, but two or three. And and of course, Mark Campbell, that's his home county that they're based in, and then if they produce something. They just express interest of being a part of it.
Cool.
Um, the other big thing was Terry and I went to the opioid conference. Kind of telling Gene earlier, have a little bit of mixed feelings about the conference, wasn't very impressed on the first day. It was not what I was hoping to get out of it as far as how to use the funds, where they're coming, what. We do have exhibit E, which I'll pass around, that shows it, everything we can use them on. But it was a little bit more based on substance abuse in itself, and there's some things I didn't quite agree with. And of course, you got to remember this, it was the opioid response network putting on the conference. Using Isaac as the host, uh, so of course, Mark Campbell's our president of the supervisor affiliate. He was gonna sit down and kind of talk to Bill about just some of the things talked about or expressed wasn't in line with our. Is that a way, nice way to put it, Terry? Call the second day was much better as far as resources, how to spend it, how to file it. Who to reach out to, they talk about forming coalition to best use the funds. One thing they brought up was having Narcan everywhere to use as, you know, if someone had an overdose. But there's a lot of training that needs to be involved in that, who gets it and how. Um, I think my biggest takeaway was the youth getting into the schools. You know, breaking that cycle of mom, dad are users. The kids become users and the grandkids become users, but teaching the the youth and and those how to best identify. You know, opioids or substance abuse, drugs and things that they.
Do our first response to Narcan?
Yeah, I think the school nurses have.
Some of the things I didn't agree with, Craig, is they talked about having clean needle stations so that somebody can use, can come in and just, oh, I here's. Exchange my news, and it's like.
Why don't we just give them an old new, have some free opioids or do it right away?
Well, and that's the funny thing, Kyle, they they brought up, so one of the guys talking was a past abuser and then went through whatever. They talked a lot about these other drugs that help with substance, being a substance abuse person that. Well, if you use this pharmaceutically prescribed drug, it'll lower your. I guess crave and go-use method. But it's kind of our talk just afterwards, you know, having lunch together with other supervisors is. So we got all this money because they over-prescribed opioids in the first place, now that it almost was like a sales pitch to, well. Since you have that uh addiction, why don't you take these other drugs that will help with your addiction?
Right, and we just brought them back to the big pharmacy.
Right.
You know what I mean, it's just.
It was, yeah.
Right, exactly, that's what it felt like the first day.
Yes.
That it was a s- almost a sales pitch kind of thing, it felt that way. And no one ever was very blunt about it, but it was just so subtle. Yeah, and that's what it felt like.
I I would like to bring up something.
Paying someone to be there.
We're talking about the fentanyl and and the Narcan.
Yeah.
Tony said that this, I think it was last month, a mother brought a fentanyl pill to the kid in juvenile detention. Passed it to him, luckily, with all their new camera systems they got in, they spotted it. This kid overdosed in his ru- in his room.
The mother brought it?
The mother brought it, and and that's, that's part of what we're facing in society, that's why I wanted to bring that up, you know, so sorry, Dave. I thought it was important.
Well, that's what that one guy, boy, being in prison doesn't stop me from getting it.
Yeah, some hard stuff in prison.
Yeah.
And they did say that some of the staff were interesting, like fifty percent of the people that were substance use, um, people were also mental health. Challenges, I mean, they go hand in hand. We didn't have an agenda today, but Taya Bonami from M R C H was going to come meet with us and they're trying to put together a.
Yeah, that's Manning Recovery, they have a program already there.
For substance abuse of possibly, I will see what she has to say, but I don't know.
A lot of theirs focuses on kids and going into the schools and prevention and.
Excellent.
The cycle needs to stop.
Yeah.
We gotta try it, Lee.
That'd be the biggest avenue, I mean, that'd be the most effective avenue, I.
I I do too.
And with the money that we have, I did reach out to my partner to see if we could use any of the money, the funds that we have. You know, I I can't seem to even give it, you know, away, because I've talked to Steiny on ways to do it. Haven't been able to touch base and and get him to.
I know.
Uh, you know.
But an organization like Manning Recovery, they're the ones that would have the programs that could possibly reach into the jail and help.
Well, let's, let's.
So they'll be on next week on the agenda, they were gonna do the same thing with Carroll County and maybe some of the surrounding counties anyways, of offering.
Right.
Different things, and they'll, they'll come in and explain what they can do or not do. But to me, getting to a kid to understand what, to stop them before it ever starts is way better than having a clean needle station.
Yeah.
I mean, why waste your money on that?
I know, it's like putting the mouse.
Putting the box in the house.
Yeah.
They did talk about that study, I thought that was in that rat park study, they had, and this was not what doctors did. But basically, they put these rats in a cage and they gave them nothing in the cage to do. They had a bottle of water, well, it was clean, and a bottle of water with drugs in it. All the rats in the cage were just trapped, would go to that drug water every time.
Really?
And then they said they took same or same type of deal scenario, they put a cage, but they had all the things for rats to do on their wheels and. Different thing, it was like Rat Park Heaven, but the guy said, the rats would never go to the, they're very subtle to go to the one with drugs and they would always drink the clean water.
Really?
Rats are smart.
So they said, people are in a way, kind of the same way, I mean, if you're down and out and traumatized or abused and you have no way out, you enter the drugs.
That's an excellent point.
I mean, that was kind of interesting.
Thanks for going down there, guys.
And I I do think some of them like that, um, oh, the Greg pillar for reading seven, opioid contact. Covers our area, would be a good contact, he said we could reach out to him anytime if we needed more resources. He he was with the A G's office as well.
Yeah.
Cause there's some filing deadlines that we'll have to follow when we do spend it and how we do it, and some of those forms are on the A G's website, he said.
That whole program, all the PowerPoints from that are on Isaac's website. So if you go to the resource tab, there'll be opioid under there, click on that, and then you'll be able to find if you're curious about any of the. PowerPoints that we saw.
Okay.
Yeah. I guess kind of sums up my last week, if you have anything else you want to add.
Well, like I said, thanks for going down there, guys, maybe the first day was a bit of a disappointment, but. If you picked up some positives, that's good.
But it's still the networking and just the visiting with the fellow auditors and supervisors and the control center.
Gene, can we do you?
Sure.
Later.
I just did not talk about it.
We'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll get to the uh, you can send this out on this hour now, Stan. Paul, if you want to, we'll get to you and try to keep the agenda moving.
Sure, why don't they?
Okay, that'll help, Gene.
It appears to be that way.
Appears to.
Would like your opinion on that.
Don't you still have the old box where you?
We do that one, yeah, yeah. In our back office, there we get it, Neil took it home, redid it, you know, refinished it, and just got it, it's a split case down there, so.
Call anybody before you use it?
Oh, we never use it. We stand back with a high bar. Well, yeah, I mean, if you're, if you're next to somebody using exploding stuff, you know, it's probably an uneasy feeling.
Yeah.
I just don't know what distance you use, I mean, you know, where we, wherever we're at, we can hear people shoot over to shooting range. You know, they go over there.
For the sheriffs, right?
You know what's going on.
You know what's going on, that's.
Yeah, you look at somebody's in your backyard, five hundred feet away, that's probably a little.
County houses are getting closer together, you gotta get that little neighbor.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. Well, I'm scared of Dave either, um, you know, bridges going out there. Takes time to put all that together. Companies, Doormark Steel, they come in about one day, they put all that steel in. Check everything out, under it, it'll slap, so, so it's going along all right, the asphalt project's on hold. Back, do shoulderings, why, that's fine, we gotta do work around career. That's just become a real problem, I mean, it's always been difficult for career real quick, they're finding it really difficult to just get any movement, so I don't know. Might be something Isaac, you know, could look into, uh, you know, legislatively to see if there's any way to kind of get some food. But, you know, on the E sixteen project, I had two sets of plans. It was five o'clock the night before, you guys were gonna approve the set of plans, so I actually got an agreement for whatever we worked for two years. Then, we got delayed probably six months, we had to go into the spring of the year to finally actually do the work. It's ten o'clock, show that, and we'll rather have that training, you know, their fault necessarily, you know, that's the same issue. Workers have to have three hours of online training or something before they can work close to their work. So uh, so it's become a real challenge for every team.
They're just so, really, it's so big, and that, I mean, they're just hard to get them to move.
Yeah.
To do things on.
That I agree about, the one on E sixteen, that's about half a train a day.
Yeah.
The U P is a little act more active, why, I see you, where some training would be. But when you got one train a day going by, they blow their horn, it should be all get out of the way, and then resume work the rest of the day.
Yeah.
I think we were very, very lucky on how it turned out with those first round of projects.
The bridges.
The bridges.
Oh, absolutely, and we're doing this the last one this summer.
Right.
We got the prime quarter, so then we don't have to deal with any of that, nothing, they do the work, we just provide the materials, it's just. You know, we're just getting about forty thousand dollars, but they'll do the work, you don't have to worry about flagers, we're protecting liability insurance and coordination. Not, we just, just go do it, so.
It removes us from a lot of the hoops.
Oh, everything, yeah, yeah, so it's, it's worked out well, and you get this one done, and it should be good for twenty-five years. But contractors struggling a little bit on that, that's, that's really the only asphalt that's going to happen. So hopefully they'll get it all worked out, we can wrap that thing up, a great crew, they're gonna finish up when you have a good day. We're gonna go up to three hundred and tenth street. So third project, not to your first yet, two ninety, which is pretty good south town, yeah, jazz right out.
That does look great.
Take a look at it, uh, the bridge by Dancheck, we're done with that, we have trust, we have, kind of a deck on that. And some bridge crew, they're moving up to New Culver, which is a hundred canons, called it, right there, up on B Avenue. And uh, kind of an old concrete structure that's been giving us trouble for a long, long time. We stabilized it here by five to seven years ago. Yank it out and start over, both side crews, seating, spraying, going, I catch that, finish up the seating, so. Today, most of our sites before the holiday, our pavement markings done, our seal coat done, for the holiday, which is kind of nice.
The guys came in and set up all the lakes.
Six o'clock Thursday morning.
Appreciate it, yeah, it looks nice.
Yeah, it does look nice, probably the troops get enough from up here, it'll take very long to do it. We suppose has a nice cake for for most people. And Jack was here, because Jack doesn't start at six, so this was kind of a little bit of a quandary. I said, we can't, we can't start at seven, Jack, because everybody will be gone. So.
He didn't come in just to get cake?
He did not, so, but uh, but yeah, it works out really well, they look nice. Yeah, it is, you know, they really look nice, but the weather's hard on them.
Yep.
So, Thursdays, when we're supposed to take them down, and see what happens. Uh, gravel hall started today, so Damon texts me, we had eight trucks to start with, which is. Uh, gravel haul started today. So Damon texts me, we had eight trucks to start with, which is pretty typical on a Tuesday after a holiday week. And some of the truckers started early and so go. So I'm hoping that we end up with about fifteen. We'll see how the day and the week goes here.
Where are they getting it from? We got.
It's coming out of, yeah.
Hampton?
Yeah. So two new employees started right in early this morning. Ace White and Elliot Cook. I think they were both on your, in for personnel changes. Yeah, they both know what got real well. Find out as time goes on, but they seem like pretty, pretty good hires. So. Um, you know, other than that, I don't know a lot of stuff. I'm working on the SS four eight grant. Getting more and more. And so, uh, trying to get that.
I'm gonna be in your office later on. This means that.
It should be.
I just want to stop by.
Yeah, okay. That sounds good. Um, anyhow.
It's going really well. Sounds good. Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, thanks, Paul.
Appreciate it. Jean, we got a little bit of time, so you can slip in there now.
I will try to, uh, uh, squeeze it in. This, this was our agenda, it was a little long one. Um, but the, what took the longest to discuss, you know, they went through all of the numbers. I still feel like the numbers seem low to me, but I don't know for the amount of money that we spend on mental health in our region. But where the subject came in, I keep trying to keep this pulled up so I can tell you. Uh, they basically voted for the new board. I voted no, of course, uh, but, um, it's going to be made up of the counties that have an employee record as we all were aware of. And it kind of just takes me back to the day that, uh, we decided that the state was gonna take over and the supervisor was sitting next to me goes, I don't know why we have to come anymore. You know, because that kind of now we're, we're there, where the state doesn't see why the supervisors need to be there either, you know? Uh, so that, the governor hasn't signed it yet. She's due to sign it before the eighth of June and they're all just so sure she's gonna sign it. And so they went ahead and selected this new board. So their, uh, the advisory board shall designate an educational representative, an adult user, utilizing services representative, an adult service provider representative, children's behavior health provider representative, parent of a child utilizing service representative, law enforcement and judicial system. And so they made recommendations, uh, from who they wanted to have on it, but they had done that two months ago. They already kind of knew who had been coming to meetings, who was active, involved in some of those recommendations were, uh, accepted by the board. Uh, everybody voted. I think there was only three no's, uh, because we just, it doesn't, we're, we're gonna have to go in and redo all of our twenty eight E agreements, which is all part of this because we can't be involved in a twenty eighty agreement that says that we have a vote when we don't.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So there was a big discussion about how that's gonna look. So my point was, why are we in such a hurry to get this done when we have no idea how, what it's gonna look like? How, what these twenty eighty agreements, um, they're gonna be, they're, they're gonna need to be revised by July first. Because that's when it's gonna take effect. Um, so I'll make it real short on y'all.
What happens if we don't? If we just dissolve it?
Well, let me go back to that note here then. Uh,
I mean, if we're not kicking or putting any money in, we have no say, we're advisory, why are we part of it?
Crawford County seems to have the, the lower numbers all the time. Uh, what, we can vote to leave if we want to. We can vote to leave. Uh, thanks. You know, they're seeing so much, they care so much.
The steps, though, is screwed if we do, aren't we?
Kind of. That's why I was listening so closely to that. What happens to our citizens that really need the service of Crawford County has decided to, you know, leave the region? Where do we go? Where, where's our placement? How do we make this work? Um, the, the point that was brought up also is you have these people voting who have, you know, wait, like, let's just take races last year when there was a county and that county's still gonna be on, they wanted to give eight percent races to the, the people. You know, people, we had to say that, well, our county employees are only, you know, getting a three and they believe it or not, when Caitlin comes over, she is, you know, working for Crawford County, but because she's in BV, she's gonna, everybody else around her is getting eight. So it just, we've lost all the say of being able to say that because the folks that are on there are not elected officials, have nothing to do with budget or employees. And so you've kind of turned county employees.
I mean, well, how much do they do with the people that are in need out here from each different county? I mean.
Well, so, uh, Carroll, uh, because they have a larger population gets to, uh, was there, they're gonna be an alternate kind of a deal, even though they don't have a public record. And they're also putting, uh, another, uh, Deidre Brown as a possible alternate representative. So they're kind of, that would be our only Crawford County person that has any, you know, say in any of this. So that's kind of the long and the short of it. My only hope would be is that the governor doesn't sign it. It doesn't really happen, but everybody was just so sure she's gonna sign it. Um, but, uh, so that's kind of where we're at.
Thought about at least calling down to the governor's office and.
I absolutely did, but I feel like it's probably, you know, it's kind of like, is she on the fence and my little phone call is gonna make her change her mind?
You know, you never know if you get, if you supply a good argument.
Jean might.
We know you can filibuster her. She might not get an invite to life for it.
I get it. I get it.
Sorry, Jean, I had to.
I, I could talk for three days straight.
The question is that the way you just described it, is the advisory board's only role is to appoint the board?
No, they, they do some advisory and so.
You, so moving forward, does the advisory board meet?
Yes, and there, there is a thought to possibly have the other counties be on that, kind of replace, because that's pretty much the counties, you know, that they could do some advising, they could change the advisory board to be the counties that, that don't have a vote. But I don't think the advisory board gets to advise on these, that they're more policy, you know, kind of, uh, so I don't know if that's.
And, and the county cannot utilize the facility or utilize the services unless we continue to.
Similar to the way, way the guest center works, I would believe, but I've never investigated it because I've never thought about, uh, you know, we have to do some research to figure out what we want to do going further, I think, because somehow we just thought this was gonna go away, but it's here. It's done, it's over. Uh, there's a new board starting on July first. I won my meeting and then, uh, of course I can still attend, but I would have no say, no vote.
Right. I don't understand the point of the kidding if you have to say no.
Quite frankly, with everything that I've done so far, you can vote no and you can rally and you can say whatever, but it's still gonna go lower than, and pat, you know, so what the point would be is you could, could stand up and say that, think of an eight percent raise seems like an awful lot and but you don't get to have that no vote in there and you just hope somebody would pick up what you're putting down, you know, uh, you could do that. That, that would be the only thing. Uh, but at the end of the day, you've been called out of order and totally sit down, you know? And that won't
carry much weight, will it?
It'll be interesting, I guess, because Friday I have the third judicial district department corrections
Okay.
meeting and topic on the agenda is the, the role of the advisory board moving forward is, I'm going through the same changes.
Right, right.
So it'll be interesting, I guess, what I get information and what, what you got.
So I'm feeling, so there, there is some, some research that still needs to be done, is some things that they needed to, to kind of firm up a little bit, but we've already gone forward and that's the new board. So the rest of it's just busy work. My thought was, why don't we get the busy work done and then, you know, make sure we're doing, but it was three against ten, so.
The problem, Jean, I know we've talked in the past, um, to me, the ideal would be, okay, if they're gonna blow this off, we have no say and it's just gonna be what it is to have certain people play those key roles as voting so that all of our resources go to Sioux City or wherever.
Yep.
It's, I'd love to see it get to where, let's just rebuild it where it's our four county or five county, whatever. Here, but the problem is, I think, we're.
We're gonna send it.
It's gonna be so expensive to have that whole setup be built from the ground up.
Yeah, it's.
Be hard to start from scratch.
Um, so as an example,
Just fill them.
January through April, uh, the twenty three hour consultation has not been used as much. So that's, uh, uh, community residential in the forty two days, uh, all the people I stayed, two point nine days, I mean, I bear it forward with all this. Uh, twenty eight court orders in Woodbury alone. Uh, mostly serving Carroll and Woodbury. Uh, you know, those are just the notes that I kind of took down from this report. So it just keeps over and over telling me that it's most used by Woodbury. There's a few stragglers that come from these smaller uh, communities, um, but we're all, and I, how, so the state is also giving us less money than we had budgeted for. We were supposed to get like four point three million and we only got three million because we have five million dollars in, in the budget right now. So.
Penalizing for being efficient.
Pretty much. So what's gonna happen is, is people that aren't, uh, conservative that see this and say, well, I, I love my provider because it has people that are actually using the system and they're gonna think these people are underpaid. And so everybody's, I, that's what I say, I'll personally sell just.
They're gonna finance their, their employees right out of business.
Yeah. So knowing the state realizes that, uh, yeah, it is, it's just gonna be still, um, that's all I can say.
How many people voted no?
Wow. Three. I think, uh, Ida, I, I, I did write all that.
Out of how many?
Out of, uh, thirteen, I think there's thirteen.
No, and one aspect, I mean, it's just the problem with government sometimes is that if you don't rationalize or let people know that, look, we're working because we spent all the money. That's why we need more money. And if you are trying to be efficient, or maybe you didn't utilize it all this year, they say therefore you don't need as much money. And so, you know, they tend to cut us. So therefore, if you're in these agencies, you always got to spend all the money to show that, look, we need more money.
Yeah.
And it's just a never ending circle and why government sometimes just.
So what's really hard is when, you know, we talk a lot about it in, in meetings, and then we have people waiting in the, the wings to talk about their, uh, funding requests. And they know that we have this money, you know, sitting there for whatever the purpose is related for. And they only need a hundred and ten thousand dollars to, uh, do this or that, whatever. And how do you say no when you just got done telling them that we have the, these funds that we're halfway through the year and we, you know, only used? So, but it's not really a core service that we should be funding, but when you have the money and if you don't use it, they're gonna take it away, then you just seem to just keep giving it until, I don't know.
It's too bad, Craig, they just didn't say, sorry.
That's okay. No, nobody wants to.
States just even say, per capita, here, here's how much we're gonna give per capita. You have X amount of people in your county. Boom, there's your line item. Here's our exhibit, whatever, the, how to spend it. Join wherever you want to join. Start something up in your own county or, you know, but we don't have that flexibility or, or say.
Never going to happen.
Nope.
So, you know, they've got the law enforcement, uh.
What do we know?
And there are people that we actually see every moment, every day, but we see, you know?
But the problem is, is that if, if, if we don't all put in the same amount, even though we're not getting the same amount of services, then it's gonna go broke because they need that much money that, you know, million dollars to keep it funding. If we don't keep putting our money in, then they're gonna have to cut back. And then there's gonna be a service that can't be provided because they're not gonna see where the real problem is, the overhead of it. When you look at, uh, you have all these people sitting there in a, in a facility and nobody came, but everybody's still making a hundred and ten thousand dollars and they saw zero that, you know, but you have to keep them on staff. You have to have your therapist, you, or when that person does come, you can't, and nobody that has a, a degree in therapy is, is going to not get paid for being on call, you know, and you have to have them there. They have to be making as much as they would be making in the private sector in order to, so that is just a a merry-go-round, is what it is. So, um, people that, they'll come, you know, I don't know. But there, there seems to be such a, looking at your report of what you have with your youth coming and going and um, you just hear, you know, just that little story that I'd heard about the gentleman walking down the road, wanting to have somebody run over him. I followed through on that because I needed to make sure that that didn't just go down the wayside. This guy is still struggling and, uh, I fortunately got the right answer on how he took care of that and was trying to get a court order, you know, and so we got that worked out.
But that's gone now. When you're not part of that anymore? I mean.
I, I don't know. Do I still get to call Caitlin and say I heard and, you know, because I'm not a board member anymore? I, I'm a county, you know, am I still? You know?
Well, and, and you can still be a county, but since you don't have a vote and you don't have any authority in her life or working life, you know, will she pay attention? Well, you have to see.
I would.
She's still employed last, right?
No, no.
Nope, BV. BV, that's why BV gets to stay on the board.
Or they get a vote.
Oh, the man.
She serves our, our, or Humboldt.
She serves our county.
But she votes.
But anybody should be able to be like, hey, Rolling Hill Region, we got this person.
Right. Right. I mean, you can call, but I just wonder how much weight that'll carry. I guess that'd be the best way to put it.
Well, I would tell.
You don't send any money to Buena Vista for her services?
No, the state funds that now.
State.
Funds that now, but they're still.
The county's just the employee record, but they don't finance it. I mean, it's passed through them, I'm sure. Is that about how you think it works?
The whole thing is who's paying the benefits, who, and the big conversation was, you know, if there, if that employee got hurt and it was workman's comp issue, you know, how to, how, even though they work for us, Buena Vista would be stuck with the whole workman's comp situation and, you know, that's why everybody's like, eh, you know, we don't wanna, you know, so, uh.
But Buena Vista is getting a hundred percent of her costs reimbursed by the state. So it's not costing the taxpayers of Buena Vista County any money. Is that right?
Well.
I'm just trying to clarify, yes, why are they the county record if they're not, if they're doing the same thing that we're doing, I guess, is, other than
I'm sure she lives there.
She, but she could have still, partially, but when, when they, because Louise used to be, and she lived in Crawford County and it was real easy for her to be our employee of record. But then when, uh, this gal who happens to be live in BV, we could have kind of fought it and said we wanted to be, and I think they probably would have let us.
I'm sure they would have let us.
Yeah, there's a, Terry kind of explained all of the, cause there's just more paperwork and more.
Right. And I think you're right. I think the state, so when the county did fund it, we would submit, um, all of Louise's salary, um, information to, well, they knew the salary, but as far as benefits, they would also reimburse us for benefits. So, yeah, the, the region paid her salary, paid her benefits from the county because we were funding it. So we'd send all our money. They'd tell us per capita, how much we paid. We paid them, they paid us back and we cut all the checks for salary, paid her insurance, you know, paid those.
Had to have an office for her, part of that whole deal too. But we used to send six hundred thousand dollars from, there was a line item on our budget to send and you could see that that's what the, what we took from the Crawford County taxpayers, sent it to them. Now, oh, we don't have to do that anymore. The state's doing all that, but eventually that pool of backfill that they've been using to, to pay, they're, they're gonna ask for money from us again, don't today?
That's what we've been complaining about the whole time. We're still gonna end up on the hook. The state is gifted in that department.
I, I try to keep it.
And our property taxes, if they keep limiting, they'll keep throwing mandates on them.
Yep.
Much. Sorry, do I look bitter?
No, wouldn't you sound bitter?
I'm trying to not, uh, I just, it is what it is. Uh, we didn't ask for the change. It was mandated that you shall have these people on there, but if I, maybe give me Terrence's number and I'll call. I don't know. If I get right through with the governor today, the governor, but, uh, I think that.
I think she should know this side of it though, Jean, and you do, you do articulate it quite well.
We did meet with her already and talked to her about that and she said, state's funding it? It's my baby.
Yep, pretty much.
Shut up and sit down.
Isn't that really what she said?
Pretty much, a, a little bit nicer, Dick, but, uh.
They just trim the fat off.
There were counties that weren't doing it right, that they weren't giving the services that they needed.
There were counties that weren't doing it right, that they weren't giving the services that they needed to, and so they just wanted to make it even playing field so the whole state was under the same.
Oh, once again, one or two bad apples.
Everybody gets punished.
Once again, once again, once again, because because our region was doing it, in my opinion, exactly right. We were, you know, being physically responsible and still getting the services done, and then there were counties that were not getting the the core services met. Uh, and now they do, you know, perform, performance evaluations based on, and they already started the services and they still didn't have the performance evaluation form done, how you're gonna decide if you're doing a good job, they were still working on that, you know, so. Anyways, that's my story, um, it's happening, it's over. I can go, and I probably do still go, probably, probably, just like I said, I'm still going to wrestling, but wrestling's not, I don't have any wrestling anymore.
I mean, if you look at the overall thing, I mean, like, we no longer have workforce development because of what the state did, that forced us to dissolve. You no longer have mental health board, getting an advisory role, judicial, I mean, it's just like.
So if anybody wants to give me a board to be on, I'll gladly take it, because.
Be careful what you wish for.
I'm already pondering.
You can be in charge of the opioid task force, how about that?
I would love that, I would love that, I would love to go to schools and.
Put a sticker on the Prius.
Yeah, we'll put a sticker on there.
I would love that. Less people think they're where, I'm where you get the clean needles.
They'll be running after your little.
Put a little siren light, I have you got, they're like Ghostbusters from the Prius.
Little skin with.
I need to see if I can get around to that. So there was the question of, you know, what, what if we wanna leave, and it says you can vote to leave, so I just wrote that down, because nobody's gonna miss this, I told them.
You know.
Uh, but, uh, what do we think here?
Oh, the big question was, what happens if the the employer, if they retire and they hire somebody new? This was a, this was a long one, uh, so if you're not a voting member, and let's say Caitlin retires and then somebody from Crawford County applies, does Crawford County get to go on the board? And BV goes off because they no longer have somebody that lives there? I took a, but they're gonna turn on that, then I could call somebody's attorney, uh. Yeah.
Okay.
But the twenty-eighties are gonna be amended because the twenty-eighties state, they said all voting members have a vote. Anyways, uh, thank you for letting me talk.
Yeah, thanks, Jean, but is that all you have? I had to ask, sorry.
Way to go, Tony.
I will just add one, one thing, is I did have a one-on-one conversation with Tim Stewart of the Wellness Committee.
Yes, I'm having one today at two thirty.
Okay, he said he was gonna be in touch with Jean, and I think he's gonna be in touch with each one.
Brownie called me.
Are they ready for their money?
They would like more money.
They want more money.
There is no more money, I don't think, well, there might be, but.
But just everybody's.
Thanks for the morning, because I wondered.
They called me too.
Mine's at two thirty today.
Well, I would like to bring up on that subject, kudos to Manila for creating their own wellness center and having good, good job down there, Manila's really kind of proud of that now. Hey, I'd like to bring up something before we get to ten fifteen, to the ten thirty, I'm sure we'll be speaking. Um, since Nate Deasy's involved, our soccer team from Nantisun's on their way to state and our co, and Nate is their coach, and good luck to them, I'm pretty proud of that.
I got a call last night wondering if I could drive three girls down there, and then Joey looked it up, it's way over on the southeast side of Des Moines James Park Stadium, and it's at four o'clock today, and I don't know.
Have a nice trip, Jean, we know you can't say no to kids.
Wish we had a bus. I'd love to go, I wish, but I, the best I can do is host a party at my house and put it on the express, that's best I can do.
Okay, if on the agenda, we have uh HR one source, Paul, would you like to come forward?
Sure.
Make your presentation to us.
Right on time.
Have a seat right there in this chair.
I'm gonna make you some room here, I'll take over my.
It's close.
Nope.
Not yet, it's early though.
It's N G, Terrence.
Thank you, okay.
Good morning, um, got a call, I had done a presentation uh at ISAC, I think at the law school. Uh, just about compensation, and got a call inviting me here to try to talk to you folks to see what kind of interest you may have. You know, so cut me off whenever you want to, but, you know, essentially, the issue is, you know, in my world in HR, there are two things you try not to mess with, you know, people's money and their family. It's a good way to get people to be, you know, pretty pissed off at you pretty quickly. So when it comes to wages, this is always the the issue, we bring in every Crawford County employee into this room and ask them to say, hey, raise your hand if you're overpaid, no one's gonna raise their hand, right? And so that's part of the dilemma. So, um, what boards, uh, councils have struggled with for years as far as saying is to figure out what is the appropriate wage. In my opinion, everybody has the same goal, um, boards of supervisors want to pay employees fairly. Department heads and elected officials want the same thing, and employees do as well. The problem is, is who gets to decide what's that fair wage? So this process takes, uh, I guess, I I work a lot of cities and counties. Uh, most of those cities and counties, the wage levels are just made up numbers. It's probably based on whether or not you have unions in place, um, but if you ask any office or department, you know, what's the most amount of money you can work, you can earn at Crawford County? You know, you probably don't have a minimum or a maximum, it's just a a a number that just, it's just ongoing. So what this process does is just try to finally address inconsistencies with offices and departments. Some counties look to do both indirect and direct compensation, but the goal is to just come up with a way to make uh wages across the board appear or to be equitable from office to office, from department to department. Uh, the benefit is that if you're like most boards, you guys may set a cost of living, more than likely. It's probably, probably not really based on the cost of living. It was based on how are we looking this year, you know, the state uh monkeyed with some stuff, and, you know, we talked about, uh, I mean, I've heard some of that just in my few minutes here today, about these unfunded mandates. How are we, how are we looking, what's the budget look like? Um, what did the compensation board do? Um, we know the cost of living's high, and then we try to come up with the numbers, here's the number that we're gonna go and put into effect. Uh, then depending on your budget process, you may have individual department heads or elected officials that come and say, hey, thank you very much for the three percent, but I did some research and my folks are underpaid. And so we would really like you to consider another bump to get us to where our comparables are. And so this addresses all of that, uh, ideally once and for all, that counties and cities that have put this in a place, that's it, there there would be no more of those conversations. The intent would be to uh take over uh the compensation structure that you may have in place in any office or department. Um, additionally, it would take a look at uh the classification system. So, um, most of the counties I work with, that the auditor is, must be near the auditor.
Good assumption.
Yeah, that uh, any new thing that comes down the bike, any HR issue is yours. We just figured that we're caught up to date, you did everything you were supposed to do, and you're like, sure, I got nothing but time on my hands, I'll go to these HR trainings. And and so it's hard to get, get caught up. So the other part of it would be the classification, uh, where it's not uncommon that we find, you know, the way we pay people is not quite legal, essentially, is what we look at it, and it can get into, you know, does our chief deputy earn overtime? Do they, can that chief deputy earn overtime or comp time?
Chief deputy meaning just.
Oh, the sheriff's office, yeah.
He earns comp time.
Okay, and then what about like the second in charge in secondary roads?
So that would be.
Like a road maintenance supervisor?
He would, he can earn overtime or comp.
And then in public health, what about our registered nurses?
They'd earn overtime.
And then how about conservation, like my naturalists?
Uh, she can earn comp time, yeah.
And so those are just things that, each of those positions, there can be an argument that they're truly exempt positions, and we wouldn't need to pay um overtime or comp time for them, so it's not a goal.
Like the salary person?
Yeah, exactly, um, and then, I mean, there's just confusion with terminology. You know, I run into this a lot, that if you're a deputy office holder, you're a salaried employee, like, but you're really not, you're still a not exempt employee.
But they're all deputies, everybody in this courthouse is a deputy.
And I, and I get that, but it, but there there still would be non-exempt employees, so if, okay, so if they work more than forty, but it would be just, that would be the other part of this plan, is to take a look at it and say, hey, uh, what are we doing? Are we being consistent across the board? Uh, we're paying overtime and or comp time for these positions, which are not legally required to. Uh, and is it makes sense, do we wanna continue doing it? Um, it would just give that opportunity to present that to the board, so we'd know where where at least we were in that process. The way this is different than, you know, if you're gonna try to uh set employee wages, you can say, hey, ISAC's got a great bunch of information, you can go to that salary survey, pull down a ton of information, which is great, the downside is, is you're not comparing apples to apples. Because at the end of the day, you may have the same job title, but do dramatically different things, but, you know, I can tell you from experience, the, you know, a treasurer in a big county doesn't do what a treasurer does in this county. You know, that it's, it's different, you could have the same job title, uh, but the amount of work or the types of work being done are different. And it wouldn't surprise me if we had that question get brought up in in Crawford County. Say, well, you're a clerk, I'm a clerk, should we make the same amount of money? You're a deputy auditor, uh, you know, you could be the 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 first deputy in the auditor's office, well, I'm the office manager at Rhodes, and we do the same things, uh, but, you know, you have an expertise in elections, but as an office manager at the sheriff's office, I do those same types of issues. So what this does is, again, it addresses all of those for once and for all, puts everything together based on the job description. So the difference is, we're not looking at job title to job title, that's not how we compare whether you should make the same amount of money. It's gonna be on the duties and responsibilities of your position, so that's what makes this process different. Um, and then what you would do is, you know, just briefly, that that page one, that employees, we'd ask them to complete a job audit questionnaire. Tell us about yourself, what did you have for a degree when you came in the door, what kind of experience was required? Departments, uh, department heads, elected officials, complete a job description. Um, some counties put in place a team that would evaluate the positions. Um, the board of supervisors has a role where you set parameters as far as that, that pay structure, um, and how it would work overall. To give you a little bit better idea, on page two, you start saying, well, how do you compare apples to apples? And how do I compare a deputy sheriff to a conservation naturalist, to a clerk in the recorder's office, to a victim witness coordinator in the county attorney's office? How can we compare all of those positions, um, and make it an equitable outcome? The way you do it is you break down every single job, um, into compensable factors. And so this is that, these are those examples of, what are they, two, four, six, eight, nine of them here? That no matter what job you hold within the county, you have a certain level of decision-making. You either supervise people or you don't, um, what kind of education experience was required upon hire? What role do you have in the budget? Um, what role do you play with technology? Uh, what impact do you have with context or communication, are you negotiating with people? Or when you're approached as a county employee, it's either yes or no, uh, fiscal skills, working conditions. So if you flip the page, then, this is just an example of how it can work, that if we had an employee, that's a job, let's say it's the county engineer, county engineers were gonna acquire a civil engineering degree typically. I mean, there's a grandfather, but those folks are, um, getting older like me, but there's typically a four-year degree. Then you have to earn your PE, which would be a professional, um, engineering licensure, which means you have to sit with another, um, person for four years before you can, uh, become a county engineer. So that job description is created by the department head team. Um, if the board wants, then you create an employee committee, so that the employees are the ones driving this system. Um, and then that employee committee essentially grades every job description. So every unique county job description, all offices and departments, those job descriptions are created, kicked off to this employee committee. Uh, that employee committee then would grade it, and as an example, the county engineer, we'd say, okay, what about education? Well, under education, they would get a six, they have a bachelor's degree from a four-year college and university, and specialized or technical training, okay, so that position would score a six under education. That team does the same work for every unique job description. So we're taking what seemed to be very dissimilar jobs within the county, comparing them to the same criteria, and we're finally able to rank them essentially, um, top to bottom, as far as how they score within the system with experience. If you had a, um, if your engineer retired, are you guys willing to hire somebody right out of college? Or do you wanna get experience, how much experience would you require for a new county engineer? Well, in this market, you might say, we'll take somebody brand new and teach them the management side. So again, it depends on how the job description is worded, but we would say, okay, it's a, is this thing? Okay.
Nobody else has heard this?
Dave's our butler.
Okay.
Dave takes good care of it, sorry about that.
No, no, I I was just like, I think I'm losing my mind, these people don't seem to react to it, I'm like, am I the only one that hears this?
No, sorry.
Yeah, it was, yeah, I don't know, crazy, you heard that. So then under experience, you would just say, hey, if we're gonna require, we'd like to have somebody that has two years of related experience. So that position we scored is a four here, okay, but again, every job description goes through this process. The employee team, you know, I would say, I would like a cross-section of employees, I don't want all elected officials, I don't want all department heads. You know, I'd like all the bigger offices represented, but top-down, maybe the highest-paid employee, the lowest-paid employee, um, and then that's the group that's gonna do this evaluative process.
Paul, quick, yeah, on that note, a problem getting involvement from a team like that to be, to be doing that, you know, a lot of times, our employees are very busy, they have a lot to do, they're like, you want me to do what now? I mean, you want me to sit down and take time away from what I'm already struggling to get all my workload done?
And the the commitment typically is gonna be, the very first time we do it, we'll have to sit down and evaluate all unique positions. So that would probably, that could take two days. Now, whether we break that up into two single days, or we do four hours at a time, so there's that initial investment of time upfront. But then, on an annual basis, it would be, you know, it could be limited a couple hours a year, once it's in place. So once it's in place, um, we would only then have that team meet to review brand-new positions, or any positions that an employee said, hey, I think you scored me too low, I want my position reevaluated. So the time commitment on a normal year for these people on the committee could be a couple hours a year.
The initial. For the initial.
After the initial.
Who typically is the driver behind that, who's the lead of that team?
I would be there to train the team, and then typically, it's, you know, it's up to the team to then take it and move forward from there. So, um, it's not a voting thing, the people that I want on that team are, I want bright people who aren't afraid of a little conflict, if you think in your head the answer should be no, that you're gonna say, nope, I don't agree. And that they don't have any hacks to grind them. Okay, I don't want anybody on here saying, well, I'm gonna get all my friends a big raise, or I don't like that person, so they're gonna score poorly. So that's the group I need, um, and and typically, you know, it works really well, uh, because they will hold themselves accountable, but it's not a voting group, we reach this via consensus, uh, but it does affect people's wages. So any volunteers?
You're the only one here, so you should have a committee.
I'm just sitting here thinking, you have so many employees that think they're underpaid, how do you deal with them on the, you know, because eighty-five percent of the employees here think they're underpaid. So, how do you find a committee of people that could be there?
Well, and what they do is, that committee isn't gonna set their wage, they're just gonna give them a score. And so if you turn the page to, uh, the next one, I don't think we see a number, and. but looks like this, okay? Okay, so what that shows is, this is what the committee does. All they do is give it a score. If you see the very, on this example, the engineer was the top one, shows decision-making a six, supervisory a seven, education a six, experience a six, budget impact a five. Right? They're just scoring every one of these positions based on their job description. Okay, so what that team does is this. Now, in the end, it'll say the engineer scored an eighty-four point eight-two, but that doesn't mean anything to them. Okay, so they're not really the ones setting the wage dollar amounts, that's my role. But so this committee, all they're gonna do is be consistent and score every unique job description based on how the job descriptions are written. Okay, that's all they have to do. Then the next step then, then we come back to the board and say, okay, the, the team's done their work. Based on the job descriptions and the compensable factors, this is how they've ranked folks. Now, we gotta figure out how much do those people get, get paid annually. And then I come back to the board and say, who is our external comparability? Okay, so there's two pieces to this, internal comparability and external. The internal part's done now. We finally compared apples to apples, in that we've taken every single county job description, compared it to the same list of criteria. And so that internal comparability is done, now we look outside. Who do we compare ourselves to? Typically, we're gonna draw a circle around Dennisson and say, all right, how far are people willing to drive to come to work? Is it sixty miles? We're gonna decide. But whether we like it or not, whether our neighboring counties are bigger than we are or smaller than we are, that's our recruiting area. That's a group that we have to compete with. We can also look at population. I usually do plus or minus ten percent based on population. Uh, we have ge- geographic location, uh, population, and then I would also look at taxable valuation. You know, how rich is the county? Now, at this point, any other uh variables we wanna add into the mix would be great. If we can get private sector data, that's terrific. Um, in my experience, um, it's not uncommon that private sector people think, oh, it'd be great to work for the county. Right? You guys get paid a ton of money, you get hypers, you get like every other day off, you know, we'd like that too. And so when we'd say, okay, fine, we're gonna do a study to figure out how much our county employees should get paid, why don't you tell us what you pay your folks? That's when it's like, yeah, no, we're not gonna tell you. Like, well then, you can't complain. We'd like to use this data, but if you're not willing to tell us what you're paying your folks.
But they have to put their actual name on it or just leave that there in attorney's office and this?
Correct. I can do it if we, if you have, anybody has access to that private sector data, I can promise it's confidential, it's only me that'll see it. But I need that to say, hey, we have a legal assistant in the county attorney's office, so those private sector offices would absolutely be applicable. But the board then decides who we compare.
They want to compare their pay plus their benefits package.
Correct. That would be a question the board is, that's, we were dealing specifically with direct compensation, how much they make. But I would recommend as, as an HR guy is to say, shouldn't we look at everything?
Yep.
Let's put everything on the table. If we want employees to are saying they are underpaid, then we say, fine, we believe you, let's look into it. How much do they pay for health insurance? Uh, you know, what are the out-of-pocket maximums? What do you get for vacation? What do you get for sickly? What do you get for holidays or the personal time? Let's look at all the other benefits, those, that indirect data. Get it from all of these groups to say if we're, this is truly gonna be apples to apples, we wanna know the whole picture. And that's what we did. So as an example, I put this in place in Pocahontas County. And employees are like, we're underpaid, you know, by, I can look at any neighboring county and we're underpaid by two bucks an hour. Well, the county um is one of the few counties left that employees don't pay anything for family health insurance. So we're like, oh, you wrote that down right away.
I'm moving. No, I'm just kidding.
And so the board is like, well, we understand you might be a little bit interrupting, but what's that worth? And so we looked at it, we looked at the comparability and said, that's worth, I think it was like three dollars and eighty cents an hour. To say, okay, you thought you were two dollars an hour underpaid, but once we throw insurance into it, you're really not.
You're a dollar overpaid.
You're a dollar overpaid.
Dollar, yeah. She ain't gonna miss a penny.
Yeah.
I hear that.
But, but, but you'd look at both indirect and direct compensation, come back and say, hey, this is what that, the full picture would look like. The next page then shows, just a breakdown. Again, this is just an example that would show um a structure that we could put in place. Now, this one, if you look across the top, eh, there's a starting rate, year one, year two, year four, year seven, year ten. So this structure just says, hey, if you're gonna be a Crawford County employee, um, you get hired, and then you're gonna max out at ten years. Now, the way you move from minimum into maximum is, assuming your performance review shows that you're doing a nice job, you get a one-year step, two-year step, then you have to wait two years, you get to the four-year step, then you wait three, and then you wait three, okay, to progress through this system. Other counties will say, no, ten years is too short, we want it to be fifteen years. Okay, but that's up to the board to decide how you wanna put that in place. Um, when I did this in Johnson County, they wanted it completely based on performance. So we're gonna take out these steps, all we have is a start and a finish. And if you're an exceptional employee, you move through this a lot quicker than somebody who isn't. Now, in addition to this, these, um, this pay grade sheet that is adjusted by the true cost of living. Okay, so this is gonna go up based on the cost of living, based on the Bureau of Labor Statistics, saying that, cause this is an investment, right? This would cost the county twenty grand if you wanted to do this. Um, twenty grand plus, depending on some decisions you have to make. Um, and there's an investment to it. And um, once it's set, then I'm gonna come back to and say, these numbers are absolutely accurate. Based on the, the people you have employed, based on their job descriptions, this is the market rate for this job. And to make sure that remains accurate, this has to be adjusted by the true cost of living each year. So it'll be a brand-new system for employees to figure out. Um, we come back with the final here on page seven, that just shows how it would work. Essentially, you're taking every county office and department, putting them into the same compensation plan. So you could have multiple positions um within different offices, all in the same pay band. And it, so if you look at this one as an example, just says, uh, the assessor is in pay grade nineteen. And so then you flip back a page and say, well, pay grade nineteen pays between thirty-one seventy-nine and thirty-five ninety-seven an hour. Okay, that's the system that's in place, that would be in place. And then the last page is just that cost of living, showing where we get that information from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Okay, so, what do you love about it, what do you hate about it? I'm an HR guy, so I don't have feelings. I got into HR because I don't like people.
You know, cost of living is kind of a difficult one, you know, based on what just happened last year.
Yes.
You know, and then there were years where it was zero, and that's not gonna go very well.
Correct.
And so, uh, that's exactly the answer.
Well, and the cost of living would be um what the board would be paying for is a determination of what the correct wage is. We go back to the beginning to say, the goal is, we wanna know what people should get paid.
Yeah.
Because if you ask everybody, they all think they're underpaid. So that's what we're fixing.
Yeah.
Then, but, you know, uh, the people, when we're done, the people that I show were underpaid, think I'm the smartest guy in the world. And the people that I show are overpaid, you know, think I'm an idiot and this whole system is stink. And the truth is probably somewhere in the middle. But what you do is, again, the goal is to say, we need to know what the target is. This isn't a question of affordability, but we'd say, okay, here's the target, here's where you land. Every time I've done this study, I've found that, again, because we have a range. Um, and that range is anywhere from thirty to fifty percent of a raise you get from start to finish. So ninety percent of employees are gonna fall within their range. That's what I've found in every single county.
But we, you, you basically are creating an analytical system as opposed to a hypothetical system, where we are guessing what you should make versus what you, you know, it gives you a scale.
Exactly. And you avoid the, every year the department head says, hey, I know you're offering this, but here's the study that I did. My affiliate group says that this is the number.
Exactly.
We now know that's not the number.
Yeah.
So as far as implementation, there typically isn't a cost to the board. It's, they're just, you put in place, you can do what you're currently doing. There isn't typically a huge outlay. Um, and again, I would expect ninety percent plus of the employees are gonna fall within the range. We just now know what those parameters are.
And the continual comparing, and you know, you know, for us, they say, well, the, the city's paying this, and we're only getting this, so we have to, then the city says, well, we have more to do, so we have to go off, and then every, and when does the latter stop? Because everybody is just trying to stay ahead.
Exactly.
Assuming that they do more than everybody else.
Right. And, and it's just that market comparison, because at that point, when, if it's the city that keeps bumping it up, you'd say at some point, sure. But at some point, they're gonna be out of whack. This is gonna be driven by your job description, that we're comparing apples to apples, and what the market says this position is worth. And that's it. So that can be a hard discussion to have with people. I mean, I had it in a private sector world where we had a, um, she was the secretary to the president of the company. Worked there like fifty-six years, she would never leave. We didn't even know what she did anymore. As the HR guy, I'm like, I'm not sure she's still alive. But she stayed there for fifty-six years and got raises every year. When she retired, she was making like a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year. And all she did was kind of release the valve on that.
Don't give a man.
That should be a bump up in.
Yeah, exactly. Oh, I'm sorry, I meant, yeah, that's very valuable, sir. But, um, we're like, hey, this is out of whack, you know? Just because they've been here that long doesn't mean that's what the market should pay for that position. So she ultimately retired, um, put this in place, ultimately, you know, saved that organization a ton of money, because they could replace her uh for quite a bit.
So a couple of questions then, that I guess I, that, that I have, is that, um, what did counties do when they went through this process? And they found they had some employees that were overpaid? What did they do with those employees?
Um, it happened in Johnson County, and it also happened in Pocahontas County. And in Johnson County, my recommendation is, my goal would be is I want every county employee within the range, somewhere within minimum and max. I don't care where, as long as they're within their range, then I'm, I'm good to go. Um, those are called red circled rates. Pocahontas County was their um, uh, economic development guy. I think he was making like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. My understanding is everyone else in the county knew he was overpaid, but he didn't. So that's what this showed. Hey, that one's overpaid. My advice to that board would be to say, don't take money from anybody, but freeze their wage. You know, as uncomfortable as the conversation is, it's, hey, you've been overpaid for a lot of years. I know you don't wanna hear it, but that's the fact. We're not gonna take money from you, but we're gonna freeze you wherever you're at. This whole um template will move. The matrix will move every year based on the cost of living. So at some point, it'll catch up to you. But at this point, we'll freeze you. So that's what Pocahontas County elected to do, to freeze anybody who was overpaid. Uh, what Johnson County elected to do was to give them half the raise. If you're over, and the cost of living is three percent, we're gonna give those folks one and a half. Do it. It'll take you longer to get them into the band, but, but that can work. Um, and as you have mentioned, the huge increase, the true cost of living this last year, depending on what month you look at, you know, eight percent.
Yep.
Okay, employees were like, hey, that's great. Board, we all want eight percent.
Yep.
But also, hey, it wasn't that many years ago that under this system, the cost of living was negative.
Yep.
Yeah. And so that works as well. So again, all I care about is my pay grade numbers are accurate. So that year that it's a negative number, this is going backwards. Now, if the board says we're not gonna cut employees' wages, that's your call.
Yeah.
Just like on years where it's an eight percent raise, my sheet's gonna move by eight percent. But as county board, you can say, we can't afford that this year. So we're gonna let this move eight percent, but the best we can do is four. That still works, because at least we still know what the number is. We still have the target.
And, and do you know, see if I get my question out right, but the total expenditures that the county was spending for their employees on salary or on wages? And once they implemented this system, how much did it go up just because they implemented the system? Meaning if I was spending a million dollars and I implemented this system, I now spend how much for all those employees? Just because I implemented the system?
Yeah, it just depends. It depends on where you land. Most would say, I'd say as far as that initial implementation, um, it might cost nothing. Because really, once it's implemented for the first time, the only people I would say would need to bump is anybody who's below the minimum. So if we had two people that were a thousand dollars under the minimum, then I'd say, hey, give those two people a grand. Otherwise, if one hundred percent of the employees fall within the pay band, there is no cost at all. You don't have to do anything, you can leave them right where they're at. Um, and then it just depends. Um, Pocahontas County, um, they put it in place, and their secondary roads union decertified. So in some counties, I think they could, they would say that we were gonna see a cost savings in some aspects of that, because we're no longer paying for uh, union representation. Because those employees, once, you know, the law changed, the only thing they can negotiate are wages, said, we're gonna stick with this, we don't give you a union anymore.
I would think that this would help with union negotiations a lot.
Absolutely. And then, and what's the upfront cost for the county and then ongoing costs to HR one? Is that, is there, there's?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
For you to do this.
Yeah, I would say, depending on whether or not, how many employees, how many individual positions are to be evaluated, whether you want to do that employee committee, or you want me to just do it. Um, and finally, would be, I mean, it's just a timing, it's just an hourly timing thing for me. Um, and then whether or not you would wanna include indirect compensation. Hey, wages only, or do you wanna say, well, no, if we're gonna do this, let's do wages and benefits?
I think you have to do wages and benefits because that's the overall picture.
Yeah, so based on those, I would say you're looking at twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand.
For the initial?
For the entire program. So for the entire thing to get it from start to finish and implement it, uh, would be in that, you know, depending on what you chose here. On the high end, call it twenty-eight grand. On the low end, twenty, depending on number of positions, whether you're gonna do indirect, and if you're gonna have an employee committee.
Do you do yearly support then, or do we take it on our own after that?
It's up to you. So then, it depends, the committee, um, if the committee, I like the committee approach, because then it's an ongoing thing, that you don't have to revisit this again, and you don't have to keep paying. Honestly, you can say, hey, get the committee up to speed. Um, is that our HR bro?
Yeah.
She's gonna stay, take part of it, she's gonna help you with the training, it's gonna be a complete handoff to her. Once it's done and in place, it's done, I'm out of here. Call me if you got a question. But I don't need, it's not an ongoing, I'm not trying to worm my way into.
So who updates all the information then, though? Like you said before, you're sliding table and graphs, you know?
Yeah.
You're doing that, but then you're giving that every year to Amy?
Yeah, and we can, I can show her exactly where to find the cost of living data, and then that's good to go. And then what happens annually? So let's say you have a check and balance in place. You have employees that are like, well, this was dumb, I knew I was underpaid and this said that I was overpaid. This guy's an idiot. So every year, every year with department head approval, that employee can say, I want you guys to relook at my job description. So they rewrite it, so this would typically be October, somewhere before budget time. To say, any department head elected official that wants to have their positions relooked at, come up with a new job description, give it to Amy. Amy, give it to Amy, Amy's gonna get that team together, they're gonna score it, however it's scored, that's it. If it goes up, it goes up. If it doesn't, it doesn't. And then that's what you would do every year with wages. So no more, you have offices and departments come to you one-on-one, or say, we want another bump. Nope. Write a new job description, get it to this team of employees. This team of employees are gonna determine if the scores changed, and if they didn't, they didn't. But then Amy would take that, be able to put it in place. Um, but yeah, depending on how comfortable they would feel, you wouldn't need me back.
How would this affect the compensation board?
The conference board?
Or the conference board, yeah.
I, I would want, for this to work well, I need all my external boards and commissions to say, yeah, we're open to this. And that would be the other thing that could affect the, the cost, overall cost. Um, would be, I want buy-in from everybody upfront. Because typically what you have is, everybody thinks they're underpaid. So I, I would, I wouldn't doubt that this would be easy to sell upfront. Oh, hell yeah. Bet you look this up, and I'll be happy to go with it. So it's, oh, it's great upfront, but I would want every external board and commission to say, yeah, we understand what was going on, and if that's a presentation for me, so be it. But this is what we're gonna do, this is what the goal's gonna be. The board of supervisors wants your commitment that you're gonna follow it, good or bad. And so that would be the conference board, uh, EMA.
And you're doing elected officials, though, I mean,
Yeah.
You, your circle that you would draw is really only the county.
Right, with elected officials, I would pull the elected official out, but their deputies still remain.
Okay.
But for the, the five elected officials in my board, then I would say, pull those guys out. You don't need to be part of it because of the way the code is written. Um, so the elected officials will be.
That's what I'm having trouble reconciling in my mind is, you know, what do you compare that to? Because we're from the count.
That's, that's where there's the limited, you would still look at that at those counties, but there wouldn't be a public sector comparison to an auditor.
Yeah.
You know? Um, but, but the way, if this were to put in place, then the compensation board, and this is typically what counties have me do, is I will go and present to the compensation board around December, whenever you guys are having those meetings, to say, these need to work together. That these have to run together, cause if they don't, we can have a problem. Because, uh, a first deputy could be limited to eighty-five percent of your enormous wage. And, uh. The sheriff, yeah, just put that. Yeah. And so there's a statutory limit.
This thing on the sheriff.
No, 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 yeah. So there's statutory limits, but so that's why they have to work together, cause it's possible. In our study, we're gonna say, hey, that first, um, deputy should make blank. And if my compensation board, you know, I can run into problems everywhere, so they need to work in together to say, hey, this is all gotta work together, and it works great, it works great when it goes into place. It depends on the board and whether or not.
I mean, it gives you some parameters that right now we're guessing our way through.
Yeah.
We have no idea what I've got.
What your main selling point would be with employees, that hey, if you are underpaid, this will prove it, so you'll get to that. What you need to be sooner than later.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
And you'd say, hey, this is finally, you've, you've, everybody has complained for years that we weren't getting paid right. Well, now we're gonna find out, we need your help, you're gonna be part of the process, you're gonna fill out a job audit questionnaire. You know, if I need to interview folks, I will, but they're gonna be part of the process from start to finish. And in the end, um, well, I'll be able to prove it to them, this is how much you should, this is based on the market and what you do, where you should land. There's no more complaints about, well, they're an office manager, I'm an office manager, and they make more than I do. Job description's different.
How many counties are using this?
To do this kind of a thing?
Yeah.
I've done this probably maybe in ten cities and counties. Um, and then other counties use me more for just like their part-time HR guy. But for this kind of a system, um, I would say.
And what's, what's their result?
Um, bumpy, and then they love it. So the hard part is getting to the point where people understanding it. But once they do, and that's where, when I presented at ISAC, Pocahontas was in that, we love it now. But it took them a while, and it's hard to tell people, hey, I'm sorry, I know you think you're worth a hundred and fifty grand a year, but you're not. You're just not.
You have a problem moving forward with people that change their job description? So that they can move up on the scale where, you know, you've got an employee and you're like, man, that, that one needs to make more. I'll just change the, the job description and.
Yeah, you, you, I do.
Okay.
And then what, at, at that point, um, just televised, I gotta be a little careful. Yeah, so, uh, yeah, in those cases, the proof is the proof, right? And that's typically, I think in Johnson County. Back in the day when we did this, there was a big push toward having computer focused programmers, that's how far back this went. And, um, Johnson County was having a heck of a time hiring programmers. So they gave all the programmers in Johnson County like a five thousand dollar raise. And said, we need to do this to keep you here, but when the market levels out and there's more programmers around, we're gonna take that money back from you. They never took the money back. So when the study came in, like, it looks like all you programmers are high. They're like, we know why, okay, because of this had happened. And so we went back and said, hey, the programmers are high, and they're like, well, we gotta redo their job descriptions. Like, they require a master's degree and twenty-seven years of experience, and at that point, I step in and go, no, they don't. We can go back to the job description when they applied, you don't have anybody in that role. You can use what they've done previously to determine what level of experience did, was required, uh, what education level. You hired this position, what did they have? So that's my role to say, hey, this one smells a little funny, we wouldn't allow it, and that happens. But there's a check and balance in place, because if they do say, you gotta have a master's degree and twenty years of experience, okay? And then that person retires, and you go to put a job in the paper? Well, no, 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 the only way, you have to have someone with a master's degree and twenty years' experience. Like, we can't fire any of them. Well, then they don't get to earn that rate of pay. So if that's not what you can hire for, we need to redo the job description, it's a bachelor's degree in two years, that changes the wage. So there's checks and balances in place to make sure that. Do that.
Where are you located on that?
Yeah, we were.
So this, uh, this is potentially what the job requires.
Correct, based on the job description.
This would be your job description on what they currently have.
The, the compensable, the compensable factors would be, um, uh, these would be the areas that we would grade the employees on.
So let's say that somebody has a master's degree, but they're not using it, so they put this down, does that raise them up? Okay, it has to be, it has to be required.
Has to be required.
All right, I just was thinking, well, what if your master's degree, you decided, just kind of.
Well, it seems to me like every, every year when we've dealt with the budget so far, and I, Colin and Dave can probably talk to yours before. Fair, fair wages is what's always come to.
No.
You gotta be fair, and, and rightly so, well, this basically solves that riddle. Would you agree in, on, in, in premise?
Well, the other thing that makes it hard, having come from the private sector, is everybody knows what everybody makes. But nobody really knows what they really do, and then you compare it to Carol, and then you find out Carol's, and I'll just pick on the auditor. Their auditor's department has a lot more assignments because there's less people or more people, and it's really not an apple and an apple. It's an apple and a banana, but we just look at, uh.
The name.
The name, and then the ISAC data, which is useful. But again, what makes this difference is we look at the specific duties and responsibilities. The job title doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Um, and then you have an employee group, which I think also gets you that buy-in. This isn't some outsider coming in and doing it, this is an employee committee that's, uh, that's, that's signed up.
I like it.
But thank you very much.
Yeah.
So what about department heads that have their budget? And you're coming in and you're telling them, this is gonna be the wage? Do you have department heads that are okay with that? Or, cause in the past, we've had department heads that said, well, I have twenty thousand extra dollars and I'm gonna give it to my employees, it's my budget, I'm gonna do what I want. How do you deal with those department heads?
Yeah, there are always a few, and if they're in their own, please point to it. Yeah, I mean, the, to me, the way it works, it has to work this way, it has to be, um, a team approach. To say, and I use this over and over again, it's not this board, you know, your compensation system is more than likely broken. Everyone I've ever looked at is broken. You just made up numbers twenty years ago, you give it a cost of living, and this is where we're at. Um, and that's what I would tell people is it's not this board who broke the compensation, compensation system. You didn't break it, for us to fix it, we're gonna have to fix it moving forward. And so that's where I would want that buy-in upfront, with every external board and commission to say, are you sure? This is how it works, are you okay with it? Even to the point of getting, you know, whether it needs to be a motion that the conference board says, yes, we're interested in following this system. And then when you have that crazy elected official that says, I'm gonna do whatever the hell I wanna do, they can, they can legally. And I've had this conversation a thousand times, say, you know, are you sure? You know, and that's not what we're saying here, nobody wants to pick a fight, but you do not wanna get into a battle of between elected officials to say. I've had elected officials.
We have them anyway, but.
Not here, but in other counties, say, do I have to do what the board says? Like, well, it depends, you know, it depends on, does that happen here? But it's, be careful, yes, well, you can win the battle, but the board can win the war.
Yeah.
So in those cases, I would say, hey, you know, I would wanna meet with that department, that board, commission, one-on-one and say, we agreed to do it this way, this is why it makes sense, um, there's other ways to address it. Um, but I, I'll tell you, it's been very successful that people are saying, look, it's not, you know, this wasn't broken overnight, we can't fix it overnight, but at least we now have a solution.
And that's, go ahead. Given other counties that have implemented this, is there a best time of year to do that, or does it matter?
Doesn't matter, because again, there's no.
It's like, it'll take a while anyway.
Yeah, it'll take a couple, two, three months.
Some training involved.
Yeah, in it, it, it seems counterintuitive because it's tied to money, but this doesn't really have, this is a decent time to do it. Because we've, we've already got the budget set for July.
Yeah.
That's already, so there's, so, um, if we started it now, I mean, we would have the numbers before the budget process, so this is a decent time to do it. But there really isn't, you know, a, a good or bad.
I just think it's, what I like about the idea, when we sat and listened to you at ISAC, what I, you know, what, what's fair up there has always been the, the question, I mean, you know, so that nobody's under or overpaid. But underpaid in particular, it always seems to be the issue that we're worried about, I mean, nobody complains about overpaying.
Yeah.
But, well, except for this board. But, you know, I mean, we wanna be fair to everybody that works here, because I, I, I think we got a great staff all around the county. I mean, I really do think we believe that. I'm, so anyway, that's what we're after, is something that actually draws parameter and, and get, like I said earlier, instead of, instead of hypothetical, we're, we're using analytical, and it's, it's based in fact as opposed to just a guess, you know, and I mean, which the state likes to make us do, you know, and they throw out back to blues without any analytical data. You know, I mean, give us something solid and concrete to develop something that's fair, so that nobody else has a complaint.
It's still a mess.
It's still a mess.
The back to blues all over the board.
No, it's just all, and that's, and that, that's always been our complaint, and nobody's complaining that we shouldn't back to blue, but how do we do that?
Yes, I think the, the biggest point too is, so much of the time, you know, your, uh, government employees feel like their hourly wage is so much less than that person in the private sector, but you retire and you get a check for the rest of your life, and they retire and get a gold watch. And you, all, all this time, you're all working at the same pace, because everybody's gotta stay up. So if the people in the private sector get a little bit more money in lieu of that retirement, then you have to keep your wages up, but you're still getting your benefits, and that, that, knowing what that benefit is worth per hour, I think is a great selling point for why you should work at the county and stay working.
Absolutely.
I just don't point.
And not be disgruntled.
Ivers is great, but Ivers is also, like, private sectors have 401Ks that the employer can match up with the teen percent.
They can.
So that's way more than what, you know, the.
But the way it's done is completely different. You know, if, if, if you're a private sector and you're the, your 401K is invested in the stock market and takes a plunge, you're watching it go down and all of a sudden, you hopefully don't, you're gonna run out of money.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, yeah. So there's a difference. There's still a difference. Like, you know, an employer that not just the teen percent, and Ivers, and, you know.
There is, but there is against the apple and the orange, there's some, you know, uh, that have no retirement, but there, you know, there are some that have great, and then, but it, but it's a little different, because you can run out of money in the private sector in your retirement.
Rather than argue this, I don't wanna call it minutia, but these finer details.
Get your big gavel out, I'm good.
Yeah, okay. But like, but the evaluation actually takes that into consideration, those different, so that's, that's the thing. That's what I mean, is we create a fair, a more fair balance.
That was my point, I took the long way.
Okay, Dave had something quick.
I was just saying, since, um, this is only a discussion item only, and we have Colin and Jim here to discuss our next, um, agenda item. I think we can move forward, put this on agenda at a later date, to discuss and take action, and.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, and thanks for coming up, we've been wanting to do this for a while, so thanks.
Rose, if you have a card.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Ron and Barbara Songer.
Oh, really? Okay, absolutely, absolutely, no.
Small town.
I do.
My dad's sister is Barbara.
Oh, that's awesome.
We'll stop by and see him.
Yeah.
See if it's scary.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thanks, we certainly appreciate it, Paul.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda, we were gonna discuss the, uh, use of explosive devices and guns near residential area, most in particular, to those explosive devices. And if there are ordinances in a place, or should we consider something?
Would you like to fall in?
Yeah, would you please fall in here?
I've talked to DNR, I've also talked with, uh, the fire situation and with fire marshals. And they said that if, if something started on fire, but wasn't intentional, they weren't planning on putting in a charge. On the tan right, okay, tan right sold out at Walmart.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I talked with DNR, he said, as long as he's out on private property outside the city and well beyond his two hundred yard, you know, to your neighbors or anything, he's fine with it. Okay, they said, you know, you gotta be careful, because we don't wanna violate any constitutional laws. Whether there is any gonna be violated, we need to check, because I'm not going to violate it, okay? Cause I'd be super personally, not just there.
I have a question.
Yes.
Could that have been disturbing the peace though, could have been another charge? And this came from one of the people out in that neighborhood, that they can't believe that they had to put up with that, their windows were shaking and from both.
You'll have to ask the county attorney on that part, that we can charge that.
They thought it would be disturbing the peace, because, so I'm, I'm just trying to ask some questions that they were.
I just don't know where, you threw a line somewhere, or keep throwing line out further, further, further.
And, and of all the people that I talked to, they all are concerned, you know, about the county, how, you know, hunting then becomes an issue in the county and all sorts of different, uh.
True, that, that's true. And then another thing, you know, we're, we're just out at landfill, and I'm sure everybody here is shooting.
We were talking about it earlier.
But we got a burn, you know, if somebody has a concern, I wanna go see this particular person and have a visit with him.
I wish you would.
Maybe to build a berm or something, and then put fire in the tan right, if you could do that for me, I would appreciate it. It, if, if he had kids, he wouldn't like it either, even the shot shots, because I was point detecting by area here about a month ago, and I heard shots coming from over by the bridge, and I'm only, oh, I guess it's probably a thousand feet away. So, but you can't fire over water or anything, so I had it over there, cause I didn't know if they were shooting my way, cause you don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I went over, they weren't, but I told them to campfire next to a river, so we got that.
But what happens if your neighbors and you live totally out in the country? You know, now there's houses closer together in the county, it used to be county had a house here and there, but now, you know, it's.
If they're within that two hundred yards, you cannot fire and fire.
Okay.
Cause of the danger of the bullet.
Right.
How close is a twenty-two going, guys? It goes a mile, don't it?
Yeah.
Well, and that's.
I don't know where they come up with that from, I assume you're, when we put up, uh, that, the range, we did it because we're shooting.
Twenty-two yards.
Two-twenty-three, okay? That will go a mile, okay? We did it so that we don't get sued here, that's why we built a big berm, so I know the bullets aren't going beyond that berm.
Yep.
So, just safety, but now we're speaking for others who don't.
Look it up if I want to.
In our neighborhood.
Goes more than two hundred yards.
And.
Two-two-three.
We don't know which direction they're shooting.
AR.
Okay.
You know what, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so what they're saying is, as long as you're not two hundred yards, you're all within your, the laws of the state of.
But what if your neighbor's here and you're here, you know, I don't know, and you don't know if they're shooting this way or toward, you know?
I, I don't.
I don't want to.
I don't, I, I'm kinda like you, it makes me nervous, but you'd have to ask again, I think you need to talk county attorney, because if I do the charges, he's got to do the prosecution.
Right, so can I ask you, are you up to speed on what happened? Uh, so could have that been a disturbing the peace charge?
Um, I mean, maybe, right?
No way.
So the disturbing the peace is, is found under this disorderly conduct statute of the state, which has like four different ways you can commit disorderly conduct. One of those ways is to emit loud and raucous noises intentionally and recklessly.
Okay.
That causes an unreasonable distress on occupants. It also has to be near a residence or public building. So it was struck down as unconstitutional about five years ago, because the language was pretty vague about what loud and raucous noise was. It used to just say, you're in the vicinity of a public building. So.
Or, or private residence.
Or, or, or private residence. Now, it's been retooled, that, that's specific prong of disorderly conduct. Now, all I can say is, what I consider it, disturbing or disorderly conduct, it would be highly contextual. If we have people blowing up tan right in the. If we have people blowing up Tannerite in the country, especially having been warned by the sheriff that there's kids around, super loud, you know, you just settle down. The problem is Tannerites, like the sheriff says, is legal, even if it is explosive, it's it's not barred by any statute and it's considered a firearm that is protected by the second amendment, the same as the firearm is. And so if they're not doing anything wrong, a warning from the sheriff really isn't, I mean, all due respect to the sheriff, doesn't mean much, right? Because they're not doing anything wrong.
Yeah.
Um, but whether or not it would be caused unreasonable distress to the occupants, that would be up to a court. Up to a jury.
So that'd be civil, that'd be civil though, wouldn't it?
That's a criminal statute.
What is it?
It's a criminal statute.
So even shooting the AR out there could be the same code because it's bothered me.
But and then we have this competition between what is considered a loud and raucous noise that causes unreasonable distress.
What did you lie?
If the source of that, if the source of that loud and raucous noise is a constitutionally protected firearm.
I get it.
I mean, we're we're really balancing a lot of interests here.
I mean, I could drive out, I I I will drive out, I haven't gotten to go talk with him. But he could tell me where to go, okay? And nothing I could do about it.
And that's what's hard.
I mean, where hopefully where this happens is it within 200 yards of any of those people that.
Sheriff counted it.
That complained about it? Well, one of the deputies stepped in.
Eight hundred feet.
It's about eight or nine hundred feet, so he's well out of his distance of the 200 yards.
He's about 300 yards.
What what my thought, that's my, that's my only question. My thought was to actually talk with him and see if I could bring the lady over with the kids and show him that he has a berm in it, if he he doesn't, but hopefully he would. Because he's basically responsible for any shell that shoots out there. So just because I I'm shooting and I'm out in the county and I shoot over and hit your window, your tractor, that's over, it's not any residents, but say I'd hit your tractors or or something, I'm civically held responsible and hopefully nobody gets injured because then I'm really, I'm still be civically.
This just makes no sense to be doing it for the the people that live there and their the pictures on their walls are shaking and their kids are terrified and their dogs.
Then let's get a state statute to stop some of that.
And changing to your question earlier about what direction they're pointing and what direction they're shooting, there is a criminal statute for reckless discharge of a firearm. Uh, if that causes injury, uh, it's a pretty major charge.
Yeah.
Um, but it's a charge even if it doesn't cause injury. So if you intentionally discharge a firearm in a reckless manner, it can be a simple misdemeanor, no injury or no damage occurs.
Wouldn't be.
And it goes up in there because it's probably damage for bodily harm, they start getting up to the offense.
That's not clear that we shoot.
If they're shooting back towards a city and there's no.
We shoot away from houses, but we got burned.
Like the the sheriff's office has a break in the back, so if the bullets miss the target, they hit the hill behind the targets. If there's nothing, there's no break to stop the bullets. Uh, if bullets are dinging off trees in the backyard, well, then I would say that's a pretty reckless use of the firearm.
Basically.
But here's here's the part that that hits me a little bit is, oh, no, they got hurt. So you've got, you know, neighbors, I've been walking off, but they're pretty close. It's Easter Sunday, you hear the neighbor over here shooting guns and you got six kids under age seven, this is not me. But, you know, then all of a sudden during the, when there's the kids aren't there, they don't care, but now you got all your grandkids over and the bullets are going and you hear, it shouldn't have to be between the neighbors to say, can you not shoot your guns today?
If there's bullets wasn't over the property, I would, I would personally consider that reckless. That would be fine moving forward.
So somebody's called in and said that the bullets.
No, 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 the neighbor just went over and said, hey, you know, please don't shoot guns today because it's Easter Sunday.
Mr. Mulvare has got a.
To me, it's a very slippery slope if you start to mess with your ordinances, oh, 200 isn't enough, let's do 300, here's what you said. Or, well, now it's Easter Sunday, well, I don't care if they shoot the other time, but let's all, now Sundays are banned or.
And that's where we're going to get no comment, Dave. I think that's my personal opinion.
Or if it's more of a noise, that's the problem, keeping me up, well, now I don't like that bin fan running or.
I got it.
You know, Dave, if you go out and talk to him, maybe, maybe how he was encouraged, his mom or something, and he started to shoot Tannerite again. But I don't think he was shooting Tannerite before that. I think he just, he's the kind of guy that if you go talk to him, I think if you talk to him, you might get by with something, but if you go out and say, hey, this is bull crap, this needs to stop. I think you're just going to anger him more because they know their constitution.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? So it's just going to get worse.
I get it.
It's common sense and.
Probably encourage some good neighborly activity.
I agree.
However, to 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 basically land under the attorney's point that, you know, asking people to have berms to not not, well, to to protect your neighbor, but to defend your own right to build, to build the, you know.
Protect yourself from a lawsuit.
There you go. There we're on to it.
That's why we built it out there.
I mean, to go back towards the city.
And if people.
Without a break in the back, I mean.
Well, look how, look how we did it at first. We didn't have a berm, we turned and put road closed, the the landfill happened, we put up gates. We shut the gates when we were shooting, that way nobody goes beyond this point because we are still alive.
Yes.
Regardless what happens. So I'm going to protect you, the county and you guys, the county, you know? So that's why we did it, we got a nice berm. I like a lot about it and maybe.
I think that probably be beneficial.
Yeah.
Just to create some good neighborly behavior.
I don't know if it's going to work, but it sure can hurt.
Yeah, so.
As far as ordinance from the county, I don't know the advisement on that, but I think there's existing state law that we can work with to kind of problem solve this issue and if it continues to be an issue, then maybe we can look more at it, whether even ordinance is feasible.
Yeah.
Because I don't even know if it is feasible.
I don't believe, I I can't think of anything that would be, but I think first thing you'd do is try to appeal to somebody's sensibility and then be practical and and not only protect your neighbors, but protect yourself from lawsuits.
I think that's where I want to come in at, you know what I mean?
But this hasn't been an ongoing.
And if he understands that there is statutes out there that that he could be violating.
That way you have to look into it.
Yeah.
I don't think you'd want a county ordinance more strict than a state statute. I don't know.
And I don't think they need.
You can anyway.
Ordinance can only cover those spaces that doesn't have state or federal laws, you know, directly on point. We kind of fill in the gaps, so if there's something on, and that's where I can go research this.
Well.
It's very similar to our pipeline, granted, developed laws that are better, but I have some glad that you're state or federal law are addressing it.
Yeah, right.
So should we can, that's what the laws.
Oh, yeah, we just got this guy.
We're trying to make sure that if there, what else could have maybe been done and and one of the neighbors.
We don't find out where he's shooting, how he's shooting, and I don't know, guys, I haven't been out there.
Yeah, that's why we wanted.
If you guys wouldn't mind.
Yeah.
That'd be very.
Sure, like, go try it that way.
Yeah, disturbing the peace is the question.
By the way.
Well, regardless of shooting firearm.
Right.
By the way.
Thanks, Colin, we appreciate it.
We got the guy from yesterday, just arrested him about a half hour ago.
Oh, the red pickup?
Yeah, we pinged his phone, so we were able to locate it, find him. We haven't found a red pickup, but we're working on that.
Okay.
He did not take a child yesterday, like everybody was posting, okay? He did, he was, the lady said he was nice enough to say, hey, step out. He said, I know I'm a butt head, but I take it off. Got my other card, did not take him, did not hold the knife, anything towards him, okay? Just, I want to fill in so you guys know.
Okay.
And then we we tracked all day yesterday and then it's going to slide out, but today it came back to life, so.
Okay.
We had another county go over to the house. I talked to mom and she, uh, she really got really pissed yesterday. She wasn't as nice as the lady you ever met, and all of a sudden I go, can you talk? And she goes, I can talk, and I go, will you have to be there? And she goes, no, and I said, man, you know, you're going to be in a heap of trouble if he is. And she goes, I'm in a heap of trouble right now, regardless. That's what it told me, so we had deputies go over, then they wanted her to come out, so I texted her on my phone. I hate using my phone, but she she goes, who is this? And I didn't want it in case he had it, so I was scared for her because she's scared of it. So anyway, then she said, why don't the deputy just come up to my door like he did yesterday? I said, okay. So I called him and I said, it's up to you guys. So they went up the door and she let him in and they went up and got him out of his room.
Oh, my.
Almost a fight, so it worked out. He's in custody.
At least he didn't throw him.
Got him off the street.
Yeah.
Okay?
Good job, thank you.
I'll, I'll, I will get back to you guys.
And these are just unique things, they don't happen all the time, but you got people calling and, you know, thinking there's got to be something somebody can do.
But you all put yourself in in the neighbor who lives here in town shoots thinking, oh, they're coming towards my house and I got you now. I I.
Yeah, I get it.
Unfortunately, some of us are a little bit more scared of, not so much that you have your own kids to think about, you wouldn't be doing that.
Yeah.
But we'll go talk with you.
Thank you so much.
All right, citizens input, we're already to that. Don't look at the clock. Okay.
I sent that to Paul this morning, oh, why didn't you?
Just. Um, we already bored all of our our Zoom participants, they mailed on us. Yeah. Did everybody get all their info up that they needed to, Kyle?
Okay.
Did they talk about trees, did he get any?
I haven't.
He's working on it.
He did get, uh.
All five and three responded.
One showed up.
Let me go.
One has been here and looked.
Yep, I have called three, three you got to talk to and one has been here and he is going to create, and it's the clink over in Charter Oak.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Get rid of the trees. I think there's one that has a problem with that.
Let me go over that quick. Elevator is working at Public Health now and we're still waiting on money or estimates back on the contracts for this elevator. Gold versus bronze, okay? That's from Dave. I meant to bring that up earlier, actually ran it up. Anything else?
We got, do we have to hire somebody to move it at some material?
No. No.
No.
They, uh, cut, I I went out there, I, when I went through there that evening, it was, it needed mowed, so I drove my mower over there next morning and then somebody mowed it for the next right around dinner time.
Mowed it, you know?
Yes, uh. Yeah, but this time it was actually, they must have got ahold of somebody and hired him. It's one of Bruce Lee's son-in-laws or something.
Right.
Anyway, it's in that, maybe a grandson, but it's in that crew.
We have that checkbook from the cemetery account.
Okay.
Letha brought it over with all the stuff when she got her feelings hurt. And, um, anyway, so that money is township money.
Yeah.
So weeds need that.
So, yep.
And they probably need to go to the bank to figure out how to get their names on that account or move the money to the account that they're currently using.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter how they do it. They can have all the money in one account.
It's all their money.
That's fine, right?
Township's money, yeah.
Have the minutes from the meeting that authorized that to happen in order for them to get their names on or if that helps.
But then we need to also continue through with the transfer of that property.
Right.
Not accounting.
Into the township or whatever.
I never, yeah, that would be.
I know, he's still trying to clear up that.
I think it was one of the French kids or something. Can't remember off for sure. But that's who went out there and mowed it and so. I just handing that back over to Randy and and the township.
Okay, so which cemetery are you talking about?
Paul, St. Paul.
Oh, we're talking about, you know, we're talking about the Charter Oak Cemetery, about another two.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one the county owns. That's why I didn't understand why she was handing over all that stuff. So all the money.
Was doing the cities?
It's not city.
And then, I mean, the counties, the Charter Oak Public Cemetery?
That's Charter Oak Township Cemetery.
And Letha was doing that one?
This word gets so convoluted because.
So messed up.
Really, we have no idea who. Because Charter Oak Township checkbook, according to the weeds, never has any disbursements for lawn mowing.
This checkbook has all of it, all the money. They were levying for an owned cemetery and an unowned cemetery and all that money was going into the checkbook that is sitting here.
And then just the back history of knowing who was paying for that cemetery to get mowed and who was paying for that cemetery to get mowed, I have no idea.
Right.
Where the money ever came from or whatever.
I know.
I don't, I was getting mowed, but I always left it.
So now, what are you talking about?
I mean, Ted Butler did some mowing out there because that's what the records show.
Yep.
Um, there were some other.
He mowed the one in question last year.
Self one. Is he still in a meeting or should we adjourn?
We are.
We're in a meeting.
It doesn't matter, we have it here.
We're trying to solve our cemetery.
Yeah, so.
So maybe we can contact this young man or whoever it is that's now doing St. Paul's to also do the Charter Oak one. I mean, Randy, you could do it or our back.
I'm pretty sure I agree. Because boy, don't we, that's the last time.
It's your business.
Like, well, whatever.
I did like.
So I mean, I could definitely deliver a checkbook to him, but I think we almost need to have a hearing, you have to have a conference. Or not, I don't.
I know, I don't know either.
I'll talk to Randy.
Here's your target here.
Say, we gotta get this figured out. We got checkbook that has money in it.
Right. And it's their money, it's the township's money.
Yeah.
Who's the township?
Charter Oak Township.
So Letha.
That township, who's their trustee or who's the? Randy Weed.
Randy Weed, Lori Weed, um.
My wife.
Oh, yeah, Natalie Rosberg. Is there another, there should be another one too.
As a retired.
Can they go over this? It's on the website. This is worth extra dollars.
So do we, uh. So that that's the only one that we were worried about to begin with.
Was the.
Charter Oak, Charter Oak part of the three.
Somehow, somewhere.
Was Letha doing them and then just?
Both of them? I don't know, she had the money for both of them.
That's the thing that confuses me because when they asked me who's paying for, I said, well, we got to talk to that name.
Let's put it on the agenda and talk about it.
That mowed that one.
Same fault, yeah.
Where do you get money from? Is there another account that they were living off of just for selling the blocks and?
Can I, can I ask, could we possibly put that on the agenda and have them come in and explain it so we'll all know once and for all?
I don't think they do.
I don't think.
Nobody really knows.
Okay, sorry.
No, I don't think they do know.
That's what we're discussing. We don't know who knows. That's what we're discussing. We don't know who knows.
I think we're trying to, that's why we were going to just transfer that deed over to them, draw that line in the sand and say, hey, here, here's the money, here's the property.
Keep levying for it. It's an owned cemetery. You can levy more.
Yeah.
That's the difference between levying for owned and an unknown cemetery. Owned, you can levy more. You can levy what it takes to maintain that cemetery.
And I, I gotta assume that that, whichever one of Bruce Lee's grandsons or son-in-laws that's doing. They can, they can bring. Well, he's got a big group, but I mean, whoever that is, if they're doing St. Paul's, they're only a mile away from doing Charter Oak two.
Three miles to get there.
It's a long way.
Let's not make that a point. But anyway.
All right, I will.
All right.
Is there anything?
Can we put Paul on the agenda for next week? Can we discuss him forward?
You want to talk about that, the, what we?
As well, but still fresh on our minds and.
Have it as an action item.
Yeah, we can.
People in here to.
And I'd like to get some way in from the, I'd love to have had everybody here today, to be honest with you.
So it don't sound like there's a performance evaluation.
We could set it that way though, because.
The way he was talking, I mean, you're in the, I would get Paul on Zoom, I guess we have some questions.
Yeah, I think that'd be the good thing to do.
And I think it's fresh in your mind, it's better to just, if we're gonna move forward and.
He talked about him when we were down.
For the elected officials not, not.
Not included.
Not included. I don't want, I think that's a question to bring him on Zoom with him and then. Yeah, I think it should be. I know, I think it should be too.
Well, and I think, I, I think you could probably do that.
He said no. He said that it wa, it wasn't.
Yeah.
I thought that's what he said.
I wonder if it could be. I wonder if there's a different kind of evaluation that can be done.
For the, for the comp board?
Yeah, well, for, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Cause I really, and I'm not picking on her, Kayla, just the way it turned out this year, I mean, she, a new.
I know.
Elected official.
I know.
Yeah.
But it happened to me when I started too.
Yeah, but it.
Would that one happen?
Then you, you take off and you, you start zero years experience of somebody that had twenty plus thirty years experience.
Right.
That don't go down, but it should.
Right, and it's, yeah.
It makes no, it makes no sense.
Right.
But how, but.
But Wayne Dale's advocate, it's a lack of position. I mean, that's what they say, don't matter.
I know it.
Right.
I guess I don't, I don't.
I think that's why it's.
But, but, but they always say, you know, the voter takes care of that, but the voter.
They don't, because they don't know.
They don't.
They don't know what they don't know. They don't know, I'm sorry. It's okay. No, I'm glad you did this.
I agree with David, elected a fit, elected position.
Right.
And if nobody would ever run, then you would say, okay, maybe now.
Then it's good enough to give a raise to.
Then we may need to raise the amount.
I don't think people don't run.
I protest.
They still like to run. I know, it's, uh.
They have.
And you can apply for the job and get it, but it do have to be a popularity contest and it's, it's.
Right, because it doesn't change the amount of responsibility that.
Yeah.
Offices hold over other offices.
And that's the other part of that, the, or the only part of it is that they're all on an even playing field, whether you're doing.
Right.
I don't.
I understand that if nobody runs for the position and you determine nobody's running because of the rate of pay is too low, then you need to raise the amount of pay that you're.
But they have to raise everybody's.
Not if nobody's running for county supervisor, but everybody's running for everything else. I would say then you just have to raise the amount.
Wait, this last election.
Consentivize somebody to run. Um, if people are willing to run and work for the amount that's being offered.
What I've heard from other counties, just on that, counties that didn't keep in somewhat within line, they might get people who are very disconnected or quality of. That don't sit in the chair long enough to do the job or doesn't require. Or they don't do nothing. They'll say, I, I got this position, but. That's what I. They don't pay nothing. I'm not gonna do anything more than I have to.
But you can't pay for that attitude.
No.
You can pay them whatever you want.
But you will if they get voted in.
But you think they'd get voted out then the next time?
But if it's so cheap, nobody wants to do it.
Well, I'd like to bring up a point. I mean, we were pretty diligently to find three Republicans because we didn't think you were running at that point. We just wondered if we were gonna have three people to fill the seats because we had two people retire. And, you know, with Kyle, we didn't, you know, at first we didn't have to. Others. And you, nobody, you know, at that point you weren't planning on.
I wouldn't even know at that point.
But well, that's my point. So we were potentially at a point where you were gonna have to do it like in City Hall where whoever wrote in, somebody that got one vote, now you're, you've got to, you're the supervisor. I mean, so is it because of money that we have no interest in this or is?
It's, it's not because of money, I can tell you that.
Because of dealing with the.
You think?
Crap? I mean, I don't know. To me, there's a little nonsense to deal with.
I've got to tear his lungs out of my head.
But you.
No difference than my, my job over there, of course. I don't make near enough.
You have to be, uh, self-employed, retired. You can't be working down at the bank forty hours a week and do this. You can't.
No.
So there cuts out a whole big stream of them.
Yeah.
Some people when they retire just want to be retired. They don't want to have a meeting every Tuesday.
Yeah.
And they don't want to get phone calls. So they're be very qualified. They think it'd be a lot of fun, but they don't want to have Tuesdays free.
Yeah.
So that's not money. You can't buy that. You can't, you know.
And then, you know, so that, that's something to think, that's something to think about.
My opinion.
Something to think about. Yeah, I think we put him back on the agenda and then act, actually ask for a little department head in attendance so that they can, and we can discuss it and.
I would bring lunch next week.
Oh, if we do that, we'll need to bring lunch.
Boy, just bang that gavel.
Yeah, I was, I was kind of hoping you'd bang me out.
Move the hat away.
Well, I, I was wanting to give everybody a chance to hear everything, you know, so I, I, you know, we had him here for a reason.
At some point in time, though, this five people that sit on this side, not you, we'll have to make that decision regardless of what everybody else on that side is trying to tell us what to do. We think this is the way to move forward.[1566.71]